Thank you. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Combenzi?
Here.
Commissioner Campana?
Here.
Commissioner Coyne?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Mayor Prokton Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Nene?
Here. Commissioners, is there any agenda changes that you desire?
Not much, you can make it shorter.
I'm... Commissioner Combenzi?
I could take up the consent agenda item 8I and 8K.
8I is the rezoning of city-owned property at Founder's Landing and 8K was the other one? Okay. That's for scheduling and public hearing, Duke Life Point. Okay, those will be items 14 and 15 respectively. Unless there are any objections, I would like to move item 3 to the first action item before the public hearing. So our two ladies from the U.P. Children's Museum don't have to sit through the Smart Zone hearing. I don't think that interests them quite a bit. And the other one, I thought we could swear in canine dog Nitro right after the presentation so Nitro can go and sniff her bombs. Without further ado, I guess... Oh, I've got announcements and we need to approve of the agenda. Yeah. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I would move we approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Commissioner Ryan is there, second? Commissioner Campana?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, second by Commissioner Campana to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed say no. The motion is passed unanimously. Announcements, I have the usual litany of openings on boards and commissions and again I'll implore citizens to go to the city website. We have a nice nifty PDF file which you can fill out the application right online. You can submit it electronically or you can print it out and bring it into the city manager's office or the clerk's office. We have a number of openings and they are also listed on the city's website so I won't read through them this evening. Now we will proceed to the U.P. Children's Museum Youth Leadership Awards to Phoenix and El Owasik. They'll join me at the podium, please. Okay. Jim, would you like to say anything?
Yeah. My friend Phoenix, he was the first and then along comes Sister Ella. And these are two of the most selfless volunteers we have at the Children's Museum for the last couple of years now where they really are outstanding in that they look after other people and don't come in with an agenda and don't look after what they want. And I love it when they come through the door. But they're not so selfless that they don't make money too. So I've been handing out checks this evening because they also have products in our museum store through the youth entrepreneur program. So in lots of ways, I love when they walk through the door because they're always bringing things. And thank you for the idea of the cake, Sarah. So we asked last time we were here, where's the cake? And so now we have cake. So pleasure and thank you.
Actually, if they're entrepreneurs, maybe you do want to stay around for the Smart Zone presentation. Well, again, the city thanks you for your service to the museum. It's a wonderful institution and certainly your services is a big part of the museum and certainly I'm sure it's a good experience for both of you also. Thank you. Nitro is our newest addition to the Marquette Police Department. He's a bomb-snipping dog and Captain Rebo, Sergeant Munger, Sergeant Collins.
I miss my thunder.
Nope, not yet. I was going to let you talk. We just got him sworn in.
I had to check downstairs, Mr. Mayor. Apparently the video isn't going all across the network so that was why I disappeared for a minute. I'm happy to introduce Nitro, our newest addition to the Marquette Police Department. If you recall, a few years ago with the generous support of the community, we were able to purchase two new drug-detection canine dogs. And a few months back, we were offered an opportunity to obtain a partially-trained explosive detection dog and I just couldn't turn down the opportunity. Now, some people may ask, what do you need a bomb dog for? Well, it's mostly for prevention, for searching or sweeping venues and doing kind of things as a precaution in addition to any type of explosive calls that we might come across. And also prevention, that kind of thing. Sergeant Munger and Officer Collins have been our canine unit for the past couple of years. Sergeant Munger's been involved for several years. The two of these officers have put together a training program and Nitro was recently certified in explosive detection about two weeks ago, which prompted me to bring him here for the introduction. And as near as I can tell, if you've got a bomb on you, you'll find it. So I actually thought maybe we should have swept the commission chambers before this particular meeting but we didn't do that. But anyway, thank you, Commission, for supporting us in this effort and we hope to be a great asset to the community. Thank you.
Okay, now we will... Yeah. Okay. I, Sergeant Munger, for Nitro Explosive Detection Canine, do solemnly swear that we support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Marquette, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office with the purpose of keeping the force in detail as an explosive detection canine with the City of Marquette according to best my ability, so help me God.
Thank you. I don't know if I should shake his hand or both of you. And you guys can keep one to bring it upstairs.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing.
Prior to actually opening the hearing, we will have a presentation by Mr. Tacclini from the Local Development Finance Authority on the Smart Zone Development Plan and TIF. Mr. Tacclini, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and this is a real pleasure for me to be here today and I was afraid after the canines left, half the audience would go along with them but hopefully you're all here to hear about the Smart Zone. We've been working on this now for a long time, quite a few months. I'm going to do my best in 10 minutes to explain it and encourage you to, at any time, talk with any of us or any of us who are on the Local Development Finance Authority questions pertaining to it. There is a brochure, I do want to mention in case I forget. It's in the back. We put this together. That explains a lot about the Smart Zone in just a couple of pages so feel free to grab that on your way out. It's also on our website and available here at any time. The Smart Zone in general, just think about, this is an opportunity in Marquette for us to try to develop technology businesses and have them remain in this area. So it's a positive thing. The state, I'm going to get to it in a moment, but the state has set up an opportunity to actually provide us directly with funds to support this. So it's a really encouraging initiative. Right now, there is a city-appointed Local Development Finance Authority. I've got, I have the names listed here. I just want to read these off real quickly. If any of you are here and would be so kind, just raise your hand just to let people around here know. But there have been a lot of people involved with this initiative now for some time and you'll know some of these names. Mark Canali, Brian Cherry, Bob Eslinger, Leslie Hartman, Bruce Heikla, Lisa Kotler's our secretary, Bob Kulcheck is our treasurer, Dan Mazzucci, Rich Rosway, Rosemary Smith is our vice chair, and I was elected chair. Richard Anderson and Scott McInnes have also been extremely instrumental in, as consultants, and I think they're both here. Are they both here? And then lastly, our city CFO, Gary Simpson, has been our city liaison and his information has been vital, especially as you're going to see, we're talking about tax matters. So very quickly, what is the Smart Zone? I'm going to try to follow the script just so I don't stay up here all day but as I mentioned earlier, these Smart Zones were set up through state legislation way back in 2002 and the state determined that we would have 16 Smart Zones in the state. And these are locations that have an ideal network of resources such as hospitals, universities, research organizations, right in close proximity to each other. At that time, Marquette was not involved in that selection process but Michigan Tech was. And they were selected as a Smart Zone 15 years ago and have proven to be a very successful one. Just recently, the governor agreed to add three additional Smart Zones and they're calling them satellite Smart Zones. And the only real difference there is they're saying that any new Smart Zone that's added has to be recommended and associated by an existing Smart Zone. Okay, so if that makes some sense. So Michigan Tech, they're referred to as MTech, they highly recommended Marquette as being the Smart Zone and were willing to work with us to develop it, which is kind of a cool thing if you think about it because you have already a very successful Smart Zone in the state of Michigan and we don't have to recreate the wheel. And they're willing to work with us and they're expected to work with us as we go along. There are going to be what we refer to as clusters in this area and that's just areas of specific expertise. And what we're talking about with Smart Zones is, I like to think of this as a one-stop-shop. Right now, we have a lot of, I keep referring to young people, but it doesn't have to be young people, but it is early-stage ideas. And people have ideas and thoughts on how to develop a business or develop something. They're not sure what resources are available and worse, they assume they're not available here in Marquette and so they leave. Okay, so partly what we're trying to do is set up an infrastructure where we're kind of a one-stop-shop where if you have an idea or a project, you could come to us, we're either going to point you in the right direction or we're going to have programs in place to help you to develop that product, apply for patent and various things like that. The city recently updated their city charter. Many of you are aware of that and it was a very extensive process and part of that new city charter is that we're required to make sure we have an economic development plan. And the city feels very strongly that this Smart Zone is pointing in the right direction for that. Earlier, I talked about partners and just why would Marquette be selected? And where we're at right now is we're at a point where we're looking for, to get approval from the city commission on our plan for the Smart Zone. We've recently submitted a plan for a Smart Zone and how it will be funded. And I'm going to talk to you in a moment here how it's going to be funded. And from that point on, then we look for the state for approval. So the question is, why would the state pick Marquette? And we're really enthused about this primarily because of the close proximity to quality universities, Northern, of course, being right here. Michigan Tech, who we're going to be partnering with, has a wealth of engineering expertise. And recently, through the Duke Life Point arrangement, they've partnered with Michigan State University's School of Human Medicine, which brings another element to this. So in terms of an educational hub, Marquette's looked at very favorably. And then we have these clusters I referred to earlier. The life sciences would include the hospitals and medical device companies that are here locally. IT and social media, some of you have heard of 906 Technology and some other companies of that nature. Natural resources with all the mining and long year. Blue water and green infrastructure would include Superior Watership Partnership. And then food systems was added as well and that would include the new Marquette co-op. So we're looking at Marquette as just being this ideal place where there's a lot of brain trust and how do we find a way to make that available to people who are interested in that? One of the big questions we've had, we've had some public forums and a lot of us have talked to different people and companies over the last several months. A lot of people want to know, how is the financing going to take place? Okay, is this going to cost us anything? Everybody wants ideally something for nothing if possible. This is as close as we're going to come. And in real simple terms, and I say this for myself because it took me a while to completely, I'm a certified public accountant by trade and it took me a while to grasp exactly how all the money was working. Okay, Gary finally had to drill it into my head. But think about the state as saying this. Look, if you're selected as a Smart Zone, we are willing to, instead of having you send us all of the school tax revenue dollars and have us put it into a pile and then allocate a few pennies of that back to you on a per pupil charge, we are going to allow you to retain it because we think you are going to do something great with that money. And we'll commit to not reducing your per pupil payment for the school year. So it's really as close to a gift as we can get from the state. The challenge is, we have to earn that right and that's where we're at right now with our application process. So part of the tax, part of, everything is based on the growth of property values and the tax base after 2014. So I know I'm going a little bit longer, I'm going to try to speed this up, but it's kind of important to understand what we're talking about is, we're going to take a look at the City of Marquette. Any growth in property values in the city after 2014, a percentage of that will be earmarked for the Smart Zone. And those percentages are 50% of the local and state school tax, again, only on the increase in property value. Okay, so it's not all the school tax, it's just that increase. And then four mills of the city tax on the increase. Now, right now, that mill is for the general fund. Today, it's at 14.225 mills. So four mills is 28% of that. So if you kind of think about it, we're asking for 28% of the increase in tax generated from increase in property value. That, we're also going to cap at $400,000 per year and I'm going to show you some quick numbers here in just a second. So we're not even, we're not even saying this is going to go on infinitum, okay? But it's just, this is where the tax dollars are going to come from. So you have two buckets, the school tax and a portion of the general fund, but if the property values don't increase, we won't be getting any, it won't earn any revenue at all. Okay, in a moment, I'm going to show you where that money's coming from and then what we're going to do, what we plan to do with it, okay? Very quickly, we had to establish, the Local Development Finance Authority had to establish the district and we've chose the entire city of Marquette but we excluded a few areas, specific areas. I just list them here. We Energies, Duke Life Point, Hospital, and Brownfield Properties and there are various reasons for these exclusions. I'm going to show you here in a quick map. Try to break up the monotony of this presentation a little bit. It's kind of hard to see but this is the city of Marquette and the areas in red are those areas that we have chosen to exclude from this TIF district, okay? So what we're going to be doing is, we're going to, if we're selected, we'll be looking at property values of everything outside of the red, particular red area. And no presentation's complete without a few numbers here, so let me explain what this is saying. We're talking about this Smart Zone being in place for 15 years, starting in 2015 and going on until 2029. If everything goes well, we may apply for extensions but for this purpose, it's a 15-year plan. In year one, we anticipate, and based on that map and anticipated tax revenues, we anticipate generating about $108,000 that would come out of the general fund. The school taxes would represent about $92,000. We have to show that we can generate at least $200,000 a year to even qualify as a Smart Zone. So that's kind of where that number came from. If you go all the way to 2001, that's the first time we would hit the ceiling of $400,000 on the general fund. So that's why I'm showing the year 2021 there. So in six years, we would finally hit the max. The school tax at that point would be approximately $700,000. The last year of the 15-year program would be 2029. We would still bring in 400 a year from the general fund because that's been capped. By then, the school tax could be approximately $1,007,000. So we're thinking that we could have about $2 million that final year to work with, okay? I mentioned just on the bullets below, the per-student dollar value will not decrease due to this. There's no intention to raise the millage due to the Smart Zone. And the Smart Zone Board that we will be electing will be responsible for providing all the metrics. The state requires lots of metrics to show, was this a good decision? That's, I think, provides us some comfort that there's going to be some monitoring of that. And the last two slides here, just very quickly, you know, what are the benefits of the Smart Zone? Again, we've talked about just having all these partners in one central location and people working together to try to establish new businesses and ideas in the area. We're going to provide office space and training facilities and things of that nature to make people want to see if their product or project could be developed and grow here. And there are, there is some venture capital money in this community, which is kind of a neat thing. And there'll be some individuals who will have thoughts and ideas that they're going to need some startup cash and we may be able to get them in touch with the right people that may be able to help them with that. So what's left to do today? We're presenting this to the city commission. They received our plan for both the Smart Zone plan as well as the TIF, which is that map, how we plan to generate the revenue. We're looking for their approval. That'll then get sent to the state, at which point we're looking for the state's approval. We've been given some real comfort that the state is in support of this. We then quickly have to establish a Smart Zone Board and that's the group that will actually develop the plan and run the Smart Zone. They'll end up hiring a manager and a management team. And at that point, and I'm committed here, as long as I'm involved with this, to continue to educate and communicate and offer opportunity to keep people aware of what's going on with this. Because I think it is complicated but it's as exciting an opportunity, I think, as the city has had in terms of trying to help young entrepreneurial companies. So with that, I will end my portion of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tacclini. You could maybe hold for, there may be some questions from commissioners and...
Sure.
Any questions, commissioners? Commissioner Combenzi?
I think one of the only questions I heard from the public was just a further explanation for the budget for the CEO and staff consultants and why that kind of goes up every year.
Are you referring to the MTech? Or you're talking about in our proposal?
Right, in the proposal.
Yeah, well, how we're looking at that is, initially, we're going to be starting up with a very small infrastructure and it's going to be primarily in place to help develop the program. We're also going to utilize resources from Michigan Tech and so we're going to try to do things as inexpensively as we possibly can. And as you saw initially, also, we don't have the revenue coming in either. There's only, you know, so... But as time goes on and we hope to expand this to where there are numerous companies in various stages, we're going to need to increase the amount of staff. So that was an individual, so much individual salary increases as adding additional support staff. We'll be doing training, providing office space, you know, various other initiatives. So that was tied to a number of people we think will need to support it. Good question, thanks.
I guess the only other thought I have is if there are any detailed plans for that part, if you could share those with the commission, just for the staffing part, just to better understand how that's going to look.
Sure, sure. And we did have that rolled up into that number and we gladly provide it. Everything is based on the success of the program and we feel we were fairly conservative when we put the plan together. We did have Michigan Tech to rely on. In their 15 years, just to throw out some quick numbers, they estimated in their 15 years that they helped start up 90 different companies and create approximately 300 jobs. So there's some history that we're basing it on. We're actually, we have a larger base than the Michigan Tech even has so our numbers came in lower than theirs so we're trying to be somewhat conservative. Thanks.
Mayor Prokton Stonehouse?
Fred, I think you mentioned this, but if you could say... The success of the Smart Zone, but that should give us all some comfort. They're expecting a lot of information to be provided and so, yes, the LDFA ultimately is responsible, however, there are entities that are watching it.
And follow-up to that, it's also my understanding that everybody on the LDFA have to be citizens of Marquette. The people on the Smart Zone do not have to be citizens of Marquette, thus allowing surrounding townships, counties can be involved in the Smart Zone. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
I say that because there's a lot of talented people who live around Marquette who, if it were not set up that way, could not be part of this and we would miss their expertise.
Yep, and we have, it's a great point. We have already thrown around various names and we're trying to find people that can best develop and drive this program. And if it requires us to go outside the city of Marquette, we may do that. Yep. Other questions?
Questions, commissioners? Hearing none, I guess we will proceed with the public hearing. I'll now open the public hearing. Anyone may address us during this period. If you would, address us at the dais in, or the podium in front, please. Give your name and your address.
I'm Brian Dixon, 123 Chocley River Trail in Marquette. I'm a physician at Marquette General Duke Life Point, also president of the Marquette Alger Medical Society. And we really see this Smart Zone as an important part of getting more out of our physician community, allowing them to contribute more economically. We can look at an example like Pioneer Surgical, now RTI Surgical, where you had one physician with a vision for what they wanted to do, which is now a major economic driver in our community. We're beginning lots of more specialized physicians with the recruitment that's done for Duke Life Point. And a Smart Zone like this can help take that skilled labor market with a lot of deep industry expertise and help turn their expertise into businesses and jobs that can grow our community and also make us more successful at recruiting top-notch talent to this community because a lot of physicians and their spouses have interest in biotech and other types of development opportunities. So we're very supportive of this and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and commissioners and staff. My name is Bruce Heikla and I live on 700 Hampton Street. Excuse me, I have a little cold here. And I'm also a member of the LDFA Smart Board here and I wanted to stop by. I'm the county... I'm the county-appointed board member. I'm also a lifelong resident of Marquette. I was on the DDA for 10 years. I've been, I'm on the county commission right now. I've been on it for also 10 years. I'm also a business owner in Marquette. And I'd just like to congratulate the city staff, the commissioners, the city manager for the work they've put into this. I think it can be a very successful project, and I'm hoping I can help with those things. I'm not speaking for the LDFA Board. Mr. Tacchini is the chair, and he does a very good job, so he's speaking for the board. But there are some concerns that I had and I, issues that I wanted to bring forward, so that's why I'm here. One of the issues would be the Smart Zone makeup of the board. I, I'm concerned about the makeup, because I think the taxpayers are funding this program, which Commissioner Coy brought some of his out. And it should be something that you should consider, putting some Marquette residents on the board. There are a lot of people in Marquette who are very, who know a lot. And there's some on this board right here. But I think that would be a very important thing to consider, since the taxpayers are funding it. Should there be a majority of citizens? I don't know. Should there be a minority? None. That's something that you commissioners are going to have to decide, but it's something that I wanted to bring up. Another issue, I think it only involves technology jobs, and it's only training for technology jobs. Can we get enough technology jobs? I hope we can. It's something that's going to have to be considered. I'm on the EDC, the Economic Development Corporation, for the county. We allow, we have a program where you can loan up to $10,000 per job. So a $1 million budget would be 100 jobs. A $2 million budget would be 200 jobs. Now, those are loans. So it's, I think it's something you have to look at, the cost of the program. And most importantly, I think that the evaluation of this program is going to be something that the city commissioners and the community is going to have to look at. There should be, if the city, what is the payback for the city? Do you want city tax dollars? Do you want jobs in the city? Do you want quality life? What is the payback? There's some kind of, probably the payback the city should get. When you're looking at the Smart Zone, if a company starts out in the city, and what happens if they move out of the city? How much money is, are you putting into the program for somebody who moves out of the city? Or out of the county? Out of the state? Do they have to pay that money back? Or is that just part of the program? I'm not making a recommendation either way, but that's something that I think that should be strongly considered, what they do with the money and how long they're in the city. So I think that's a big thing. And I definitely want the program to succeed. I'll certainly do anything I can to help the program. But I think those are some things to consider. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Heikla.
Mike Beck, 1005 Alaway, Resident of Marquette. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the commission. We've heard an exciting presentation by Mr. Tacchini on the Smart Zone and the LDFA for the city of Marquette. And we've heard some concerns here from Mr. Heikla about how we are going to adjudicate and administer the funds and how we're going to oversee that. And I hope that, I would think that it's up to Mr. Tacchini and Mr. Heikla to do some of that oversight. But please let us try to be clear with the citizens that what we are creating is a Smart Zone Corporation, which will be spending the tax dollars for the city. The LDFA will give the money to the Smart Zone Corporation, and they will spend the money. They'll have a lot looser oversight over it than any public agency has. So let's hope that the Smart Zone Corporate Board that we choose to hire are going to do the right thing. And let us hope that the City Commission continues to look at how they spend the money. Let's hope the LDFA Board continue, will look at how the Smart Zone Corporation will spend the money. It is certainly 28% of the increase in property taxes here in the city of Marquette. Now, what that really means, it certainly doesn't mean that people will pay more in taxes. What it means is that as the city grows, there will be a 28% shortfall in the revenues that the city will collect from the private property taxes. So let's hope that we can make that up with the additional growth that the Smart Zone Corporation and the LDFA is going to fund. We will be seeing that shortfall, that 28%, will be taken from the LDFA and given to the Smart Zone Corporation to do economic development. Now, with that being said, the Smart Zone Corporation, the one that runs in Houghton, they've had their ups and downs. We should be concerned about how the board administers the money here in Marquette. The, all the numbers I've seen, I've said this in the last City Commission meeting I attended, over the next three years, they'll be taking about $930,000 or $940,000 and spending it for economic growth. So with that money they're going to take, let us hope they spend it the right way and with eye towards local job growth. The one in Houghton, they create a lot of intern jobs. And I would think that the taxpayers in the city of Marquette would not want to see a lot of student interns being hired with the tax dollars that they're going to be giving to the Smart Zone Corporation. Community workforce benefit agreements are a standard and growing agreement between municipalities and these types of agencies, where the community is guaranteed a certain number and makeup of jobs from the Smart Zone Corporation. And I would hope that our LDFA Board sees fit to assemble a workforce-community benefit agreement, so that we can be assured that the citizens that are paying for the Smart Zone Corporation will see some jobs out of this. It's a very exciting time for Marquette. $17 million's a lot of money. Let's hope it all doesn't go to patents. Let's hope it goes to things like greenhouses and other things that perhaps other, more grassroots, business-minded people have in mind for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck.
I'm Eric Baldwin, representing RTI Surgical, 375 River Park Circle. The history of RTI Surgical in this community shows that it is possible to go from a small entrepreneurial company in Marquette to a global surgical implant company. And our company benefited from the original LDFA back in the late 80s, which helped to create the industrial park where we're located. Our continued success is due in large part to the talents of our communities, talents of our employees. Many of them have received workforce training and advanced degrees from Northern Michigan and Michigan Tech. We believe that the city of Marquette is on the right track in creating a Smart Zone partnership to support startup tech companies. And RTI Surgical is committed to financially support the Smart Zone, because we believe that it's important for the growth and success of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jeff Dwyer. I'm one of those from the region. My address is E 9004 Powell Lake Road, Wetmore, Michigan, just south of Musing in Alger County. I'm also the Senior Associate Dean for Research of the College of Human Medicine that was recognized as one of the partners. Thanks to Dr. Mizuki and some really incredible people, we've been training medical students and residents in the region for 40 years. And many of those stay here to practice. We're also currently recruiting research scientists with our partners at Northern Michigan University and Michigan Tech and Marquette General Duke Life Point, who, and we're finding some really outstanding talent who want to come to this community and to this region and make this their home. Our experience in looking around the state is that Smart Zones can be a very vital part of a community and economic development and recruiting new talent in places where we have campuses like Grand Rapids, for example. It's obviously a very important part of what they've done in recent years. So we just think very strongly that the resources, the synergies, the structure of the Smart Zone can help leverage the investments that we're all already making. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer.
Hi, Ben Johnson, here for Elegant Seagulls, 100 North Third, Marquette. I started my business here in Marquette eight years ago and, because I wanted to stay in Marquette. And I'd love to see other businesses have the same opportunity to see their businesses grow and emerge here. And luckily, I've had some great mentors, such as Richard Anderson and other people here today, to help guide me with my business. But I'd like to see that continuing with Marquette and be a part of it and see young people stay here, continue to grow Marquette, and see it becoming, you know, see that tech emerging. And a lot of citizens coming from Northern are so talented, and I think they don't have opportunities to stay in Marquette. And I think this would be a great way to promote that. So, thank you.
Lee Francisco, 2915 Parkview Drive. You know, I started 906 Technologies in 2005 with ambition to try to keep talented people in Michigan, and especially the UP. And, you know, we started out with two part-time employees in 2005, two full-time employees by 2010. And since then, we've grown to 27 employees, 25 full-time. So I know firsthand the importance of technology companies in the local area, because we kept 27 people in the area that otherwise could have left the area. And I think with the addition of the Smart Zone, with the support of the city and state of Michigan, I think I really look forward to the opportunities that are going to come up, especially with new companies and employment.
Thank you, Mr. Francisco.
Good evening. I'm Bob Esslinger, representing Northern Michigan University. I have my other hat on here this evening. I'm the Special Assistant to the President for Economic Development and the Director of the Center for Innovation and Industrial Technologies. We're very excited about the opportunities that a Smart Zone will present, not only for the community, but for Northern, especially for Northern, and especially for some of the programs that we have. And we're excited about the alignment that we see that could take place between the Smart Zone and some of the programs at Northern. So we continue to be very supportive of this, and we're really looking forward to the potential for a Smart Zone here in Marquette. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Esslinger.
Good evening. Rosemary Smith. I'm the Vice Chair of the LDFA and also a resident of Marquette, 1267 Lake Shore Park Place. Needless to say, we're very excited about the technology issues, the Smart Zone. However, one of the things that I found most interesting was the growth of the businesses outside the Smart Zone that we witnessed when we toured the Houghton Hancock Smart Zone. One of the exciting buildings that we toured was a converted power plant that was defunct. And they restored it. It's one of the showplaces of the community now. Another building was an abandoned hospital. Okay. Not only those buildings, but one thing that was very interesting and that the mayor of Houghton will tell us is the businesses surrounding the Smart Zone have also benefited. We've seen cropping up coffee houses, bookstores, restaurants. And the existing coffee houses, bookstores, restaurants have prospered, because they're now gaining additional business as a result of the employees of the Smart Zone and the visitors to the Smart Zone that they're bringing in. So I think, not just on a basis of technology, but our downtown, our thriving Marquette community will thrive even further with the addition of the Smart Zone. So thank you for considering this.
My name is Bob Kulischak, and I live at 617 Hampton. I am also a member of the LDFA Board, and I would like to endorse the proposal that's being put forth this evening. I think that it's going to be in the best interest of the city. And in the long term, it's going to have a very positive impact on our tax base. Mr. Heikla and Mr. Beck brought up some legitimate points. I think we have to make sure that when this Smart Zone is put into operation, that it will indeed produce quality jobs. And that's the purpose of the LDFA, to make sure that that is happening, and that will be part of the objective. A point with regard to taxation that I think is not intuitively apparent, and that is, if this Smart Zone is successful and if new businesses are created, a large number of new businesses, it will increase the tax base available to the city. So with the same millage rate, the city may actually be able to do more in supporting current services, because it's going to be generating more revenue. And I think that is an important point. But that's predicated on the assumption that the program does work. And that goes back to the issue that I think the LDFA and the Smart Zone have to be accountable. They have to be able to demonstrate that quality jobs and businesses are being created. And from my reading of the proposal, this is very possible. Another very appealing part of this is a portion of the support for this Smart Zone that will be provided by the state. I mean, that is truly a contribution by the state of a significant sum of money over a large, long period of time. And by combining the resources that are available in this community, with Northern and other things and tech, I think we've created a synergy that could possibly be very important as we move into the future. And jobs in this area have to be created. And high-tech jobs will have the greatest value, I think, for the community. So I support this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Kulischak.
I'm Tom Roy, 415 West Crescent Street. And I'm not against the development of new high-tech jobs, but I'm concerned as, the gentleman there who gave the presentation, Mr. Heikla, showed the map of the zones that were actually exempt from any of this taxation. And it's going to be a tax, of which 28% is, that could be used actually for schools. The zones like UP Power, Duke Life Point, Founder's Landing, a lot of those places have already been exempt. And so the whole, one quarter of 100th or how many percent is going to fall directly on the citizens of Marquette, not any of the businesses. It looks like they were already exempt, or they fall into the DDA or some other proposal. And I think that if a business in the tech industry wants to come to Marquette, I think there's a duplication here. I'm a little confused as the, I know you had a meeting before this, and it was explained, but I wasn't able to make it. But it just, something doesn't feel right here. And I feel that the citizens are bearing the total blunt of the taxation for this. There's the zones that you show on the map, even the new hospital zone, where they want to build their hospital, that's fine. That's exempt. The hospital that they have now is exempt. Norther's exempt. UP Power's exempt. Founder's Landing's exempt. And the medical centers exempt. That only leaves us, the homeowners, basically, are the people who are going to, paying for a zone, develop businesses or high-tech industries or whatever to, we might not even see a benefit from this. Sure, they're going to have to, if they're going to, like Mr. Kulischak said, if they're going to, you might reap some benefit that interstructure, you might have money to build more interstructure. Well, yeah, because we're going to have more people coming into the town, and the money is, will have to be, will be taxed again. I don't know. There's something not right here, and I can't quite put my finger on it. I know a lot of people put a lot of hard work into this. And, you know, someone like me shows up and says, oh, no, no, no. But I think there's too many exemptions. And they go back and they come back and say, hey, well, let's wipe out all these red zones that you have on that map, and everybody across the board be taxed equally for that one quarter of, one quarter of the school, the money that the schools would normally receive. I don't know. I'm not happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Anyone else wishing to?
My name is Craig Miller. I live at 1013 Alaway Road. I'm also currently a candidate for the Marquette City Commission. And I think this is a very exciting time with the Smart Zone, which I support. Also, the recycling facility, which I think has real possibilities. And it's part of the... I think has real possibilities, and it's part of the, part of the attraction of high-tech, knowledge-based industries. But I do agree with the gentleman there. One area should not get an exemption is We Energies, because if you've read today's Mining Journal, they're going to, their customers are going to be, could be paying as high as $250 a month electric bills. And even Governor Schneider said that some of this process they did was egregious. And this is what I wanted to bring up, the important thing. If this Smart Zone is going to work, you have to have competitive water and electric rates. And right now, the city of Marquette has some of the most competitive probably in the region. If we were to lose that, this whole thing will fall apart, because businesses look at the cost of utilities as one of their factors for coming into the city to do business. And I've always been a supporter of Marquette Board of Light and Power. I worked there for 25 years, and it's very incumbent on the whole city to keep that utility going. Their recent rate hikes are going to be centered towards generation facilities that they're talking about in the future, probably powered by natural gas. The, probably right now, they're the second biggest payer of payment and lieu taxes next to the Prescott Power Plant. But it is very important we maintain this utility, because, as I've said before, it, water and electric rates, sewer rates, all utilities, they factor in to accompany your business's bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anyone else wishing to address the Smart Zone during the public hearing? Any, anyone else wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And could I ask Mr. Tacchini to perhaps clarify what the exemption of the red is, that we're not really exempting them from taxes, but?
Yeah, and I appreciate all the comments. There's a lot that goes into this program, but a couple of the comments centered around exempting various areas. And please keep in mind, we're not exempting anyone from tax. What we, that map that I put up there that showed the red areas that are, they're exempt from our analysis, when we, each year, and there's the map right there, each year, we're going to take a look at this TIFF district, which is every area other than red, and we're going to look at that increase in tax base, and we're going to be able to calculate for the state the amount of tax that we want earmarked for the Smart Zone. The red areas we're excluding partly because we believe that its potential, some of those areas may actually have a reduction in property values. And by adding those into the whole calculation, we would actually reduce the amount of tax. So, it's not, it's not at all centering on who's going to be taxed and who's not going to be taxed. We were commissioned to come up with a district to calculate a tax rate or value on, and we've excluded these areas only because they were more risky in the long run in terms of increasing in their property values. So, it's a little confusing. This is not intended to be who's taxed and who's not taxed. It's looking at that district and figuring out what that base is. I hope that may have addressed it somewhat. I'm happy after the meeting, too, to talk any further about that.
Thank you, Mr. Tacchini. Commissioner Coyne?
I would like to move that we adopt a resolution giving approval to the Marquette Satellite Plan, First Amended and Restated Development Plan, and Tax Increment Finance Plan 2014, and to direct to the city clerk to submit the plan to the state of Michigan for approval.
Is there a second to that motion? Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
I'll be very pleased to second the motion, Your Honor.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Mayor Protem Stonehouse, to approve the resolution adopting the development and TIFF plan for the Smart Zone. Commissioner Coyne, anything further?
Yes, I have a few remarks first. One, to point out how difficult this is to understand. I've been involved in this for at least half a year, and the first two months, I frankly did not understand hardly any of it. It's so hard to figure out, and they've done a really good job of paring the information down to where I think I finally understand it clearly. Mr. Heikola, you mentioned that the city should appoint people to the Smart Board, the Smart Zone Board. The city does not appoint. The LDFA appoints the people to the Smart Zone, not the city commission. We appoint the LDFA people. And Mr. Beck has mentioned twice now, at different public comments, incorrect information. He has stated that there will be a 28% less amount of money available to the general fund, and that is not correct. It's 28% of four mils, which would be capped at $400,000. And also, I don't know where he gets, I've checked, other people have checked where he gets the figures of, we're going to give Houghton $930,000, and that's just wrong. So, I understand and sympathize with those misinformations, because it's very, very difficult to figure out. I would like to make a comment in this regard. I've been associated with the city of Marquette as, off and on, for over 30 years, and everybody who runs for city commission always says, "Well, I want to run, and I want jobs and new business." And in 30 years, that's been kind of an empty gong, because it doesn't happen. The city in the past has hired economic developers, and in my opinion, that was a total failure and a waste of money. It did not work, and the evidence is, look around. There's nothing like this been on the horizon. I think this is an extremely positive step. You've heard from people who are in business, who get it, who actually experienced entrepreneurship from the bottom up, and they're very enthusiastic about it. I think it really is a very positive step for economic development, and the other fact for this area and for the city, I think it also accomplishes something that, if you think about Michigan Tech University 90 miles away, Northern Michigan University here, there's very little connection between the two. And there's very little connection between all the valuable people in Houghton and Hancock and Marquette, and this will intertwine them. I think the Smart Zone and the LDFA will eventually become very intertwined, working together, and I think that'll bring the cities of Marquette, Houghton, and Hancock together, which is kind of stupid that they aren't now. Also, think about this town and Houghton Hancock with the universities, the quality of Michigan Tech, the quality of Northern Michigan University, the quality of Michigan State University. You had the Dean of Research of Michigan State's College of Medicine here saying, "This is great." That's something. And Duke University. And you kind of forget, it's Duke Life Point, and Duke University has very much interest in this Smart Zone and has probable great potential. And the way I count that, that's four major universities who are very excited about this. So, I would hope that we would support this. It's exciting and positive, and it's something that's been long, long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Just a couple of quick points. Commissioner Coyne, I think, has been very eloquent in really speaking to the heart of the issue, and the heart of the opportunity, and the heart of the future. But let me just make two points. Of the clusters that were identified during Mr. Tacchini's presentation, three of them, natural resources, blue water, green infrastructure, and food systems are non-tech, generally speaking. So, Mr. Heikola's comments about having to keep a focus on those non-tech clusters is well-taken, but also certainly well-covered within the confines of what the LDF clusters programs are. I would point out one last item, and I've said this before, and I'm going to say it again. The Upper Peninsula has survived in selling three things. We sell wood, we sell rocks, and we sell our kids, because they can't find jobs. They can't find the good jobs that are family-sustaining jobs. And this is our opportunity, our methodology, our hope, our way of changing that terrible dynamic we've had here, of giving an opportunity for the graduates of Northern, and the graduates of tech, and the graduates of Marquette High School, and all of the great schools in the area, to be able to earn a good living in this part of God's country. And I wholeheartedly support this opportunity solely, really, if you have to boil it down to that one argument, it's for the kids, and this is our opportunity to do that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stonehouse? Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, I support this very strongly, too, and I won't go over saying the same thing as the others said, but just to try to add a little more light to how this thing works. If you take the value of the city of Marquette today, and these dates may not be correct, and you take the value of the city of Marquette a year from now, whatever that increase is, is what this money going into the TIFF fund will be. It's that increase in the total tax value of the city. The reason those areas are being left out, as Mr. Tacchini pointed out, they could go down substantially, which could affect the whole value of the city's tax, total tax. So, we would have nothing to put into this fund. So, it's really important that we base this on those areas that have an opportunity to increase or decrease. And in fairness to Mr. Beck, the 28% is what four mils is of 14.25 mils. So, that's where the 28% comes from. Actually, 28% of the increase in each year could be dedicated to this, up to a maximum of $400,000. So, I think it's, I think it's really important. I think some of the points raised, and we brought up this point in early discussions with the folks from Houghton and Hancock, what if the developments occur outside of the city of Marquette? Is that a good thing or a bad thing? You know, some taxpayers in the city may say, "Well, you're not too sure about that." But it's worked in Houghton and Hancock, and it's kind of this, you know, a rising tide lifts all ships, and that's kind of the way it's worked there, and I think it's something we have to look at. I think the other thing we have to look at is that of the money going into this fund, three-quarters of it is coming from the state of Michigan. Do I have my math right? Yes, I do. Three-quarters is coming from the state of Michigan, because they will not be collecting the school, they'll be collecting the school taxes, but leaving them for us and leaving the school whole. So, the state is making a huge contribution to this whole project, and I think that's really important for people to understand. And it is true that nobody's being exempted from this, as far as paying taxes, and nobody's taxes will increase as a result of this particular action. So, again, I support it for the reasons that Commissioner Coyne and Commissioner Stonehouse said. This is our real opportunity to do some economic development, to really try to capitalize on the fact that we have a university here which is doing well, and we have a healthcare industry, and we have some other university connections that can really benefit us. So, I think it's really important we move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. The other commissioners? Commissioner Campana?
I think what we're doing here is we're betting on the growth of the city. So, you know, the more that we can keep here, the better it's going to be for the city, obviously. Even if you take some of these companies, and they develop, and they should move away, chances are, you know, it's a chance you take that they'll leave the city. Some will stay, some will leave. Chances are, though, there's, a lot of these people are going to continue to live in Marquette, buy homes in Marquette, spend their money in Marquette. So, even if they're out in the township or out, you know, the West End, and they're still here, we see growth. So, it's, in the long run, it's a good thing for the city. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Commissioner Campana. The other commissioner, Commissioner Reynolds?
I just have a question. I didn't want to, all my commissioners pointed out things really well, and I think this is really one for you, Bill. Do you know if anyone else has submitted an application? Because I know there's only three spots open, and I have been meaning to ask that.
Yeah, actually, all of the zones are up for reapproval by the state. There's three new zones that, as Mr. Tacchini pointed out, are affiliates of successful zones, and those three are the only ones that will be receiving the matching funds from the state. It's my understanding that from the MEDC's notification earlier this fall, we're the first of the three that are currently up for selection. What we're asking for this evening through this action would be support for the Tax Increment Financing Plan that would go to implementing it. We know there are two that are immediately in the line behind us. We know that some of the other 15 are up for recertification as well. We know Midland, for example, recently was selected. Ann Arbor is working with the city of Brighton to have a zone implemented, and Grand Rapids is in pursuit as well. So, we're the first of the three that are in the line of the affiliates, and the other ones that are successful and existing are also in the pipeline, too.
Thank you. City Manager?
That was, I also just wanted to thank the LDFA for all the hard work you guys have done. You explained it to me much better, just as Mike said, it took me about two months to completely understand it, and I think I have a good handle on it, and I just wanted to thank you guys.
Thank you. Commissioner Ken Benzey?
I just, I would like to thank the board, too. The only thing I would like to mention is just a special thank you to those who spoke up tonight, just with your concerns, I think with every issue. It's always good to look at the pros and cons, you know, what could be perceived as negative, and things we just have to really make sure that we're careful about. So, to those people that did speak up with concerns, I think there are some things that as we go through this, even though I'm going to support it, it's very positive, I do think that there are some checks and balances along the way that we'll have to watch out for as a community, to make sure that it is moving in the right direction 100% of the time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ken Benzey. I just have a couple of things to say. I guess, one concern about the monitoring of the Smart Zone, as mentioned, the LDFA will be monitoring them. Their budget will have to be approved by the LDFA. So, in a sense, their expenditures will have to be, will be subject to the approval of the LDFA. I would assume that they'll also provide an information copy to the commission, but the commission won't have a role really in approving that. Secondly, they will be subject to audit annually, just like we are. So, if there's any misspending of funds or whatever, their financial statements will be looked at just as ours are in any other governmental entity. Also, I'd like to mention, during the presentations, I was joking about Phoenix and Ella Wasek wanting to stay for this program, but it's not entirely a joke. Those young people are already entrepreneurs at the Children's Museum. They're learning about that. We're going to be here for 10, 15 years with the Smart Zone. I can easily see 10 years them taking a serious interest in the Smart Zone. I don't know what idea they might bring forward, but the Smart Zone, I'm sure at that point, will have matured enough to certainly provide a role in their success, and hopefully they will continue on that road. Lastly, the financing is a complicated issue, and the 28% or four mils of the increased value of our city sands, the red spots, will go into the Smart Zone. But remember that for every dollar that goes in the Smart Zone, $2.75 will also go into the general fund, and the contribution from the general fund, the four mils, will be capped at 400,000. So, perhaps 10 years from now, that might really generate 500,000 or 600,000, but it'll be capped at 400,000. So, at that point, all the increased value, in addition to the $2.05, will go into the general fund. The general fund is, I guess you could say, sacrificing a little bit, but it's the cost of economic development that we, you know, we think we should do, and I think this is exciting. As Commissioner Coyne mentioned, I've been watching the city for many, many years. One time, the city hired an economic developer. It really wasn't really that effective. Our city manager's done more in economic development in four years he's been here since our city, I think our city's done in the time that I've been associated with it. And I think this opportunity is an exciting opportunity. It's been proven at Michigan Tech. As Mr. Tacchini mentioned, we won't have to reinvent the wheel. We'll have the advantage of their consulting with us, the advantage of them, their mistakes, we won't make the same mistakes. So, I think it's, like, you know, simply, I think it's really one of the best things since sliced bread, so. Unless there is any other commissioners commenting, it's been moved by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Stonehouse, to adopt a resolution giving approval of the Marquette Satellite Plan, the First Amended and Restated Development Plan, and Tax Increment Financing Plan of 2014, and to direct the city and to direct the city clerk to submit the plan to the state of Michigan. All commissioners in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Any commissioners opposed the motion, please say no. The motion is adopted unanimously, and if we have to have a roll call vote, that takes care of it. Okay. We will now move forward. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation commemorating Miriam Hilton. Oh, Brownfield. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Mr. McClellan's been waiting patiently. I guess we don't do the proclamation yet. We'll hear a, well, yeah, why don't we go forward with the proclamation? It'll be a simple thing. Commissioner, city clerk, would you please read it?
Thank you, sir. Whereas Miriam Hilton was born and raised in a missionary household in Iran, graduated from Wellesley College in 1946, and moved to Marquette in 1950 with her husband Earl, who had come to teach English at what was then Northern Michigan College of Education. And whereas Miriam Hilton set down her roots in Marquette, raising five children, leading scout troops, and accepting numerous volunteer responsibilities with the American Association of University Women, Church Women United, Market General Hospital, the Market Food Co-op, and many other organizations. And whereas Miriam Hilton has been and remains a pillar of the First Presbyterian Church of Marquette as one of the first women ordained as an elder, and as a member of the season, the choir, and committees too numerous to list. And whereas Miriam Hilton, seeing the need for drop and daycare, to provide respite for single parents, helped found This Morning's For You. And whereas Miriam Hilton, after caring for her father-in-law with Alzheimer's disease, saw a need for support for families caring for elderly relatives, and in 1980 founded Marquette Adult Day Services, which continues to thrive, providing essential services to adults with disabilities and their caregivers. And whereas, after their children were grown, Miriam and Elton Hilton opened their home to international students, providing free housing to more than 50 students over the years from countries all over the world. And who then, to further support those students, established an International Student Scholarship Fund at NMU. And whereas Miriam and Earl Hilton, almost 30 years ago, began inviting friends who had lost their spouses or otherwise in need of companionship to their weekly dinner parties at what became known as Doc and Mem's Cafe. And Miriam Hilton continues those dinner parties now every Monday and Tuesday night. And whereas, this week, Miriam Hilton is gathering friends, family, and former students from throughout this country to celebrate her 90th birthday. Now therefore, I, Robert Mimi, Mayor of the city of Marquette, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of Marquette, Michigan, proclaim October 13th to 17th, 2014, as Miriam Elder Hilton Week throughout the city, and call upon the people of the city of Marquette to observe this week in her honor, dated this 14th day of October, 2014.
Thank you, city clerk. The next item will be the Brownfield Project Updates by the Marquette-Brownfield Development Authority Consultant, Mac McClellan.
Very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mac McClellan. I'm with Alwamobi. I've been pleased to serve as the Brownfield Consultant for the city and the Brownfield Authority for the last five years, and worked on most of the projects here. We want to talk a little bit about some economic development tools. We talked about Smart Zones as an economic development tool. I'm going to talk a little bit now about Brownfield as an economic development tool. It's a comparable but different program, and I think one thing that talks about, that we can talk about is tax increment financing, a little bit difficult to understand, but it is one of the most powerful economic development tools, because it takes advantage of the growth, a small amount of investment that happens on the part of taxes grows that total pie and creates a great opportunity. So I wanted to add one perhaps clarification on the red zones in the Smart Zone as well. There's two reasons for those. One is the potential for some of those values to decline, and the other is that some of those sites, or the other sites are Brownfield sites, which are also already using some of the tax increment financing. We didn't want to layer those two, so to separate those out a little bit and be able to utilize this tool most effectively for Brownfield uses. So I will. And interestingly, I'm going to talk about a couple of different projects that are being introduced tonight. It kind of shows the scale and opportunities for Brownfields as well. Some are the largest project that perhaps the city will see, and another is a very small project. So this kind of tool can operate, it doesn't have to be a big project, it can operate on most anyone. The first one I'm going to start with is one perhaps you've heard of, is the Duke Life Point redevelopment of the Marquette General Hospital project. As I'm sure you know, that the project is a development of a new 516,000-square-foot hospital, 160,000-square-foot medical office building, and a parking deck with between 500 and 750 spaces. The site of the facility is at the former Sioux Line Roundhouse and the Municipal Service Center, near the corner of Berega and Spring and 7th, and just south of Washington Street in the western portion of downtown Marquette. Is part of the project, and a complicating factor as well, is that the Municipal Service Center will need to be relocated to be able to provide space for the new hospital. There is extensive environmental relocation and infrastructure expenses associated with that, and one of the great parts is this process, this Brownfield tax increment financing can help finance some of those extraordinary expenses that are part of this redevelopment. So what is Brownfield tax increment financing? As I said, it's a tool to finance the extraordinary costs of developing these Brownfield sites, specialized Brownfield sites, and it really levels the playing field between greenfield sites and Brownfield sites. As you can see on this site, there's environmental issues to address, there's buildings to address, there's infrastructure needs to address. It helps finance those extraordinary costs rather than going out to a clean site, for example, and you don't have any of those costs, and you can develop those much more easily. And again, this is important, is the increased taxes that are generated by this new project are captured over time, and then specific Brownfield-eligible activities, that I'll talk about in a moment, on specific Brownfield-eligible properties are used to reimburse those costs over that time period. I'll have a few illustrations for that. And really importantly, is this is tax revenue that would not otherwise be generated. Frankly, without these incentives, DLP could not locate the hospital in this particular location, and they'd have to look at another location. And so, you know, currently, this is what is the taxes that are generated on the Roundhouse and the Municipal Service Center site, zero. And so over the time period, over the 30-year time period of this plan, it's anticipated with the kind of investment that's going to be made on this project, is that $126 million will be generated in taxes over this 30-year period. And I'm sure that the life of the hospital is going to be more than 30 years, and so those taxes will continue to generate. And what the issue is here, what the point is, is that a portion, a slice of that pie, that pie expands. We're not talking about taking existing revenues, we're talking about expanding the pie and then taking a slice of that pie, or slices of that pie, and investing that in those extraordinary costs. The great part about it, too, is you'll see is there's local taxes and state taxes. Again, state taxes are captured, so we're really getting a large state grant, in essence, to help develop this property as well. I wanted to make one clarification. This seems a little bit unclear when we talk about capturing school taxes, that the Marquette Public Schools are held harmless in this. They receive the same amount of allocation per student, no matter what, because those allocations come from the state. These are funds that would normally go to the state, come back in that allocation, but the Marquette Public Schools are held harmless. They receive the same amount of taxes per student, whether this project proceeds or not. And just allocation, is the city taxes are about 30%, other local taxes are about 22%, and the state taxes are about 45% of that whole pie. So really, if the investment that the city may make of 30 cents is getting 70 cents back on the dollar from other resources to help expand this opportunity as well. So I talked about eligible property. There's only specific properties that can qualify as Brownfield sites. In the early Act days, it was passed in 1996, only contaminated sites were eligible. In 2000, they understood, the state understood, and the communities understood, that there were really some sites that were problematic, blighted properties. The orphanage is probably a good example in this community, blighted properties that may not have contamination associated with it, but still have many challenges for redevelopment. There's also something called functionally obsolete properties, that are challenges that can't be used for their intended purpose and need to be redeveloped in some other way. A good example of that are state psychiatric hospitals. We no longer put people in state psychiatric hospitals, they can't be used for that intended purpose, and therefore, they're functionally obsolete. And then just recently, in 2012, they added sites that have historic designation, either state, federal, or local designation. So those are Brownfield-eligible properties. This tool can only be used on a property that qualifies under one of those four designations. It also can include adjacent property that is a part of this project and will be part of the redevelopment project. In this case, the Roundhouse, as you can imagine, is a Part 201 facility. There's significant and extensive contamination on that site that needs to be addressed. The Municipal Service Center qualifies as adjacent property to that contaminated site. And this is a 1928 Sanborn map, which shows the area, the Roundhouse property, this is where they worked on all of the locomotives for the Sioux Line Railroad. There's actually a parallel Roundhouse that was just east of this property as well, but a lot of activity, a lot of maintenance of the railway property, a lot of contamination. Railroads often have a lot of metals associated with them anyway, so it's a significantly contaminated site. And this is in 1993, the Roundhouse still was in place. There were some previous assessments that were done. The city acquired the property in 2002, and in order to exempt themselves from the liability on that property, conducted an assessment of the property, took some soil samples and groundwater samples, identified contamination, and prepared what's called a baseline environmental assessment that says, "We found contamination on this property, and we're not responsible for it, we're not liable for it." The DEQ came in and did an extensive investigation in 2009 as well, and identified the presence of volatile organic compounds, polypneutical aromatics, and metals above DEQ standards. Not dangerous materials, but materials that need to be managed and need to be taken care of in a redevelopment project. So that's the eligible property piece of it, it's a contaminated site with adjacent properties. The Brownfield-eligible activities are separated into two parts. One is environmental properties, the investigation like we talked about, the baseline environmental assessment to make sure you're not liable for that contamination. Even though you're not liable for the contamination, you still can't make it worse, or you can't expose people to it, and so you have due care responsibilities, and then some additional remediation or additional response activities. There also is another level of activities, this was amended in 2000 as well, called developmental activities or non-environmental activities, can also cover lead and asbestos abatement and demolition, and those are available in every Michigan community. Now, in 108 special communities, and Marquette is one of those, called core communities or qualified local units of government, the state said, "We want to provide an extra incentive for these main core communities, main core areas." And they also provide for site preparation and infrastructure in those cases. And so these are the eligible activities. This is the limitation of the kinds of activities that can be paid for using this particular tool. So there's a set amount of activities, they're all approved upfront through the plan that you'll be reviewing next, at your next meeting, and as well to on a certain piece of property. Now, one other important eligible activity is the relocation of public facilities for economic development purposes. It's rarely used, but this is kind of the poster child, actually, of having to relocate a public facility so that a development can occur on the site. As you know, the city and the Duke Life Point have entered into a memorandum of understanding, which really kind of set the stage for the Brownfield project as well. DLP is going to acquire the property, they'll be upgrading the electrical, water, sewer service, and conducting the environmental assessment and remediation on the site, and will construct a replacement hospital with a minimum budget of $170 million. As part of that, the city will facilitate the Brownfield plan for reimbursement of those eligible activities, and there's also a 50% tax abatement that's part of the process as well. The city will bond for and construct the public improvements and relocate the Municipal Service Center, and the Duke Light and Power will guarantee those bonds for the life of, for the life of the bonds, up to $20 million. So there's a guarantee in terms of the expenditures that the city will make after year three. Just a quick note on the infrastructure improvements that are proposed for the project, again, to relocate the Municipal Service Center, some Spring and 7th Street upgrades as well, a relocation of Berega Street, the US 41 roundabout, and a Grove and 7th Street Bridge are the primary infrastructure improvements that will be occurring as part of the project as well. So for Brownfield approval, the state law, Act 3D1, requires that the Brownfield plan has to be approved by the Marquette-Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, as well as the governing body, the city commission. It also requires that the governing body has to hold a public hearing for the Brownfield plan. That's in your packet, to set that public hearing for October 27th through next meeting. And for state tax capture, we have to prepare an Act 3D1 work plan that has to be approved by the Brownfield Authority and approved by the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality for environmental activities, and the Michigan Strategic Fund for non-eligible activities. So we have to send that into the state to get their approval. One of the most important parts about this is identifying what the public purpose of this is. This is obviously a big investment on the part of the community, again, generated by those additional taxes. This project obviously will increase investment and tax base at a minimum of $170 million. There'll be quite a bit of additional employment, the regional medical facility within the city boundaries and the city limit. We talked a little bit about spinoff redevelopment for Smart Zones, there certainly is a great opportunity for spinoff redevelopment from this project as well. It'll clean up a contaminated industrial site, there'll be significant public infrastructure improvements, and will continue that redevelopment of west downtown Marquette that was kind of initiated by the Verity Liberty Way project to the west, that was also a Brownfield project. So the approach that we've taken is taken conservative estimates, and that means that we've had a high cost for the eligible activities to make certain that all of those kind of pieces are included. The build-out for the hospital is a little bit longer, we've extended that a little bit to make certain that we don't overestimate the level of taxes that will be generated, and we've kind of lowered the taxable value on the project in the overall analysis. So just to kind of quickly, it's about $2 million of eligible activities, for, excuse me, $4 million for eligible activities for the remediation activities that will be on. There is also ability to capture administrative and operating costs for the Brownfield Authority over the life of the project as well. For the mega activities, there's lead and asbestos abatement and demolition of about $300,000, site preparation costs of about $3 million, infrastructure of about $13 million, and an allocated budget within that total, $20 million of 8.8 for relocating the Municipal Service Center. Again, here's kind of what it looks like in a graphic form, here's what happens if nothing happens on that site. There's absolutely no taxes generated currently from that, they're both public entity sites. After the first year, there is, again, a 50% tax abatement, but you'll see the scale on this is fairly large. In a very short time period, there'll be $2 million generated as part of the taxes, and then after that 12-year exemption period, those taxes grow significantly because of the size of the amount of activity that's going to be occurring, $30 million of eligible activities. That capture will continue. There's also an opportunity to capture local dollars and as well the environmental dollars for a local site remediation fund that can help other projects throughout the city. And then, after that point in time, those taxes go back to the taxing jurisdictions. So a little bit different than the Smart Zone or DDA, this is a set amount of time, a set budget, based on actual cost that's captured, based on the capture of available dollars, and then after that obligation is concluded, those taxes go back to the taxing jurisdiction, again, split just about 50/50 between local and state. There's a little bit more detail about those dollars which would be captured, again, about 30% from the city, 25, 22% from the other locals, and about half from the state. So in essence, over time, this is a $40 million state grant that we're getting to help as part of this, part of this project. This gives a little bit better idea of, again, the level of investment that occur, and again, this is over 30 years, these taxes continue over past that 30-year time period as long as the hospital is in operation. For the schedule, the Brownfield Authority reviewed an application at their September 25th meeting. We're introducing the project here to you tonight, and also to set the public hearing. Be considering the Brownfield plan at the October 23 Brownfield Authority meeting, with a public hearing and Brownfield plan consideration at the city commission's October 27th meeting. We'll be taking up that Act 3D1 work plan, which requires a little bit more detail to send into the state at the November Brownfield Authority meeting, and the development agreement will be coming back to the commission, hopefully at the November, your November 24th meeting, with the state approval, hopefully in January. So the request for you tonight is to set the public hearing. I believe there's an agenda item in your consent calendar, or was it an item on your consent calendar for setting that public hearing for October 27? I'm happy to answer any questions about that project. Commissioner Ryan?
Not a question, but again, just for clarification for people, the tax revenues will not be used to build the hospital, but only to deal with those issues on the site that are kind of extraordinary in making that construction.
That's absolutely true. They're only limited, they can only be, they're only limited to those environmental and those non-environmental activities that can be done on the site, not to construct any of the hospital.
All of that construction cost will be paid by Duke Life Point?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Questions? I just have one quick question, Mr. McClellan. The remediation fund you mentioned and the contributions from this project to that, what is the total over the life of the project? what is the total over the life of the project, and what can that money be used for? Can you give us a little more detail on that?
Sure. If it's fully collected, you know, over that time period, it represents about $18 million that could go into a fund to address any environmental issue or conduct these similar kinds of activities throughout the city. So it's a great opportunity for a fund to be developed and to utilize these same, finance these same eligible activities in any location within the city.
Commissioner Cohen?
Are you going to be here at the next meeting for the public hearing?
Yes.
Good. We thought smart zones were complicated, huh? Commissioner Ken Benzey?
I'm going to go ahead and bring this up now. I did pull this item off the consent agenda, and my concern is, is as you read the background we are presented, Act 381 requires the governing body to hold a public hearing for a brownfield plan under consideration of approval by the governing body. Further down, it reads, "Possible projects include a roundabout on US-41 bypass, the realignment of Berega Avenue, intersection improvements at Seventh and West Spring Streets, a traffic bridge over US-41 at Grove and Seventh Streets, and the relocation of the city's Municipal Service Center." We don't have that plan yet, yet we're approving a public hearing.
But we're only asking you to set the public hearing?
Right.
For the time?
This is, but if you look at everything I just read, this is a considerable amount of stuff to work through for the taxpayers. I am thrilled that Duke Life Point is in our community, in the city, but these are some serious issues that we, as a commission, we need a plan. And I can't support setting a public hearing when we don't have a plan yet with any site plans. We don't have a site picked out for the Municipal Service Center. There's been talk about contracting some services or working in conjunction with other entities, I've heard nothing back on that. I think it's really unfair to all of the city workers that spent most of their winter outside, in the cold, working overtime, to not know, one, if they're going to have a job next year, the heroes of our community that went out and unfroze your pipes and worked to make sure our streets are paved and all of that, to just railroad this through. It took Duke Life Point a year to determine where they were going to land. I think we need to get our ducks in a row before we set some public hearings. We don't have a plan in front of us.
I wanted to offer one comment. This is often very much the very earliest component in a project like this, and all we're doing is setting budgets for these activities. There'll be many items that we're coming back to the authority, or be coming back to the commission in terms of what happens with that relocation of the service center. All this does is allow us to include those within the plan and to move forward. There's many, many decisions that have to happen. This actually allows us to finance some of the investigation that will occur as well, and to set up some of those decisions. So, and if it doesn't happen, or it doesn't happen in a particular way, that's fine, it's not requiring you to move forward in any of these ways, it's enabling the ability to finance these activities. This is one of the reasons that it comes to you so early.
And I understand that I, my question is, is that, I don't know, maybe the city manager can provide an update where we are with planning a huge facility like this, and how it's going to work, and where we are with working with other entities. I mean, this is, the schedule that we were presented, like you said, within another month, we'll be voting on this.
And again, this doesn't tell you where the service center was going to go, or any of those kinds of details, or the design of the roundabout, or any of those issues.
Right.
It's just enabling a financing tool to get started for that.
Right, and maybe I shouldn't, and I understand what you're saying, maybe I shouldn't be talking to you, maybe I should be talking to the city manager, and maybe he can help us answer some of these questions.
Thank you, Your Honor. Should I do this now? I was planning on doing updates. Thank you.
It's a point of order, are we an item, whatever it is now, 14 or 15?
No.
So we're going to have to do this again later?
Well, maybe we won't have to do it later at all.
Well, that's what I'm hoping, because, you know, I don't want to be here until midnight.
The only thing I wanted to do, the only thing I wanted to do was get the opportunity to not vote on it, should I want that opportunity. That's why I pulled it off the agenda. But it seems like the appropriate time, while we're in the public hearing, to ask these questions.
I'm sorry, Your Honor, I didn't think this was a public hearing, this is just a presentation from Mac. Would you like me to answer it now? Yes. Okay. The plan that we're looking at here to schedule the public meeting, as Mac was pointing out, is a finance plan. At the grand scheme, and I appreciate Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse mentioning this in past meetings, this project is going to be several years long. We can expect, once the shovels hit the ground, that it'll take approximately three years to build the new hospital, it'll take a considerable amount of time to build a new public service center. And so, while I know the human expectation is that somehow that we've signed an MOU that all of a sudden we're going to see this flurry of activity, the most important part of the effort at this point comes into organizing, making sure that we have buy-in from all the different entities that are either going to be helping out with the financing of it or the planning of it, the choreography, the certification, as you heard from Mr. McClellan, there's a lot of environmental work to be done. In Michigan, we have a certificate of need that needs to be met in accordance with the design of the hospital, to make sure that the state agrees that it's met the minimum necessary number of beds, that it's going to be providing the appropriate type of regional services, that it's compliant with all of the post-implementation agreements that the attorney general levied on as conditions of the sale to the hospital, that in accordance with the MOU, we actually sell the property, that we solve the tax stipulations and so on. So there's a tremendous amount of initial effort that goes simply into organizing for the task. One of the most critical elements of that is getting the brownfield plan in place that says, "We're going to do these general type of components of the project." That we are going to make some infrastructure improvements, that we are going to relocate the Public Service Center. And the same thing with Duke Life Point, that they are going to do certain things to improve the infrastructure, and that when those things happen, when the engineering plans come forward, when we have a clear timeline and milestones, that those will be things the state has already said, "Yes, we agree with, and that we will finance." So if you think about it in terms of the big picture and the things that need to happen, that early effort is really kind of what we're calling the first swim lane. It's taking care of all those brownfield plans, all of the upfront coordination with the other jurisdictions, to make sure that we have as well-reasoned a picture as we can possibly put together before we go out and actually start spending any kind of money, and to make sure that any money we spend is going to be reimbursed by the state. The second swim lane really kind of speaks to the kind of things that Gary Simpson does and what Ron Keefe does. It's going to be actually coming up with land sale agreements according to the city's purchase policy. It's going to be coming up with MTT stipulations to close out the pending tax cases, kind of all of the administrative work that actually frees up the financing that we intend to use as part of the early city program for financing ultimately what everybody is interested in, which is really that third track, the actual construction. So at this point, what we're really focused on are getting that early set of activities accomplished, getting that early baseline laid in. And the way we tend to think of it is, and for many people who've been working in the field for a long time, no plans survive reality, but you have to start with a baseline plan before you attempt any kind of a project. With something like this, it's complex. Mac showed some of the highlights for what the city's going to be dealing with, DLP certainly has their own timelines for what they're going to be dealing with. They all move at different paces, they all take different capabilities, they all bear different judgments. When you're moving a lot of these activities forward, you can only go as fast as the slowest moving part. So you're making best possible speed towards whatever plan it is that you're putting in place. A lot of the marks that we have on the MOU and what you see in the materials that Mac has presented are our best guess at this point. Once we receive the feedback from the commission, once we receive the feedback from the state, we'll fine-tune those. As coordination is underway, as we start getting more answers from our neighboring jurisdictions, from some of our other partners, we'll continue to refine those. It doesn't mean these milestones are open-ended, and it equally doesn't mean they're set in stone. They're waypoints for where we hope to be with a plan that's going to be coming back before the commission. So we have three different main tracks. We have the brownfield plans, the initial plans on how we'd like to envision the project, where we'd like to end up. We have a track that's specifically devoted to all the administrative issues, the legal issues and financial issues, and we have a track that is the one that we know everybody's most interested in, which is explicitly the construction schedule. And when can we start seeing shovels in the ground? We're just not there yet. So what Mac is doing is really helping us lay in that critical fundamental basis that provides for how we intend to finance the entire project over time.
Thank you, City Manager.
May I comment?
Yes.
I'd like to take a shot at saying what you said in one minute, and that is basically, this is a classic chicken and egg situation. What comes first? What comes first is finding out if we have a brownfield plan, the state will approve, before we go out and spend tens, perhaps hundreds of thousands of dollars in planning. And we agreed as a commission unanimously to a memorandum of understanding which said we would fast-track a brownfield plan to find out if this plan will work. And so that's what we're doing. We did the same thing with Founder's Landing. There were a lot of things put in that plan, but they were just, at that point, potential things. And these are beyond potential, but they're estimates of what it's going to cost to do these things. And without knowing if we're going to have the money to do it, you really can't go ahead and really do that kind of planning. So I think this makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse?
I was just going to relate back to the experience that we all had, I think, when we did Founder's Landing, which was exactly what Commissioner Ryan was talking to. Simply, the plan literally said, "Boardwalk, X dollars." It said, "Parking garage, X dollars." And those dollars were developed from pretty good swaggy estimates of what the cost would be. That's the plan that goes to Lansing. Once we get ready to execute that plan, you go through the actual planning process for construction. And I think that's what Commissioner Ken Benzey was kind of getting wrapped up in a little bit. We're a long way from that, and there's certainly going to be a lot of confusion between now and then, but believe me, that's all it is. Think of it almost as a big to-do list with a dollar and amount taxed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse. Any other comments? Commissioner Ken Benzey?
I'd just like to say I'm not confused about the process. Founder's Landing was dealing with a parcel of land. What we're dealing with here is a parcel of land, but we're also dealing with services that we provide to residents every single day through public works. This is a lot more to think about than just a parcel of land. I would prefer to have that plan more solid than just, "We might contract with people. We're going to move the site, and we think it's going to cost this amount of money." That's not good enough for me in this situation. We're talking about moving them out in April. So to me, what needed to come first through all this was not to schedule a public hearing on the brownfield, it was to actually say, "Can we, as a city, without disrupting services, move a municipal service center? And what is that going to look like? And specifically, we better get pretty close to what it's going to cost."
And we don't know unless the state tells us we have a brownfield plan to pay for it. You don't spend the money until you get the money. I promise you're going to get money to do it. We all voted for this agreement, Sarah.
I know we did, but, you know...
That's it. That's it. We're going to continue on with Mr. McClellan on the Nestle Down Bed and Breakfast.
Thank you. To compare and contrast a fairly large project with a smaller project, this is a quick description, and I won't go through the whole same piece, but this is the Nestle Down Bed and Breakfast project that is in the site of the old Lake Shore Industries project as well. A small bed and breakfast, approximately 15, 20 rooms or so, that would provide a unique housing experience. I think it's the only bed and breakfast in the city of Marquette, if I'm not mistaken, or will be the first, and will be a unique housing experience across from Picnic Rocks. As you have in your packet, one of the things that we identified as we were going through the process of establishing that was that there was a brownfield plan for the former Lake Shore Inc. property that was approved back in 1998 by the authority in the City Commission as well. A portion, portions of that project were completed, as you likely know, brownfield tax capture was completed on the project, and then the balance of the project did not proceed. So I believe about half of the original plans were done. But that eligible property is also identified, the eligible property you're talking about, Nestle Down, is also identified within this plan. You cannot layer these plans together, you can only capture TIF on one area. So this is a little bit of a description, this is the diagram from the original Lake Shore Inc. brownfield plan, and as you can see, it includes the portion, this is the Nestle Down location, so it does include this portion of the property here within that brownfield plan. Now, interestingly, some recent amendments in 2012, Act 3D1 included provisions to terminate brownfield plans, because this has been a problem with other projects, and there was no explicit authorization to do that. So the plans can be terminated or abolished by the governing body, by the City Commission, for two reasons. One, if the purposes of the plan have been met, or if the project did not proceed in two years. In actuality, we have both in this circumstance. Half of the purposes were completed, the other half did not proceed in five years. And then a new brownfield plan may be approved for that eligible property. This is a new amendment within Act 3D1 to provide explicit authorization. So you have a request for termination of the Lake Shore brownfield plan for the ability to consider a brownfield plan, again, with a public hearing on October 27th, in consideration of that brownfield plan on October 27th. So again, the brownfield plan requires, the Act 3D1 requires approval by the brownfield authority and the governing body. You have to hold a public hearing for that, and again, for state tax capture, we have to have an Act 3D1 work plan approved by the brownfield authority and approved by the MDQ. In this particular case, there are only environmental eligible activities that are proposed. The public purpose for this is, again, increased investment and tax base, it redevelops a contaminated site. We hope to have some spinoff redevelopment around the area and provide a unique in-town lodging experience. Again, this is much smaller in a project, approximately $50,000 or $52,000 worth of eligible activities. The primary matter is cover over the project after it's completed. It also, again, provides for some administrative and operating costs in planned developments. Again, if that property currently is a taxable property, if it was undeveloped, it would increase slightly over a period of time, but again, in this particular case, there's going to be additional taxes, significant additional taxes. And because of that low amount of dollars, again, this is taxes that would be collected otherwise, but there's a, the eligible activity capture is at the end of six years. So it's much quicker, a higher ratio of eligible property or property taxes to the eligible activities. Again, we can capture for the local site mediation fund for a period of five years after that, and then the balance of those dollars will go back to the taxing jurisdictions, state and local. Again, the split is very similar in terms of local and state taxes, city and state taxes, and a significant increase for this relatively small investment on the project. And I will say that these costs are quite high in terms of our estimates. We anticipate that the actual eligible activity costs will be much lower. So for that small amount of investment, a pretty significant return for all the taxing jurisdictions on the project. Again, the schedule is quite comparable. The brownfield authority did review the brownfield plan and work plan at their meeting on September 25th. Project introduction here, the public hearing notices have to go out as well, public hearing and brownfield plan consideration by the commission on the 27th, and then hopefully DEQ approval of the eligible activities by December 15th. So again, the request is to terminate the brownfield plan for Lake Shore Inc., originally approved in 1998, provide for consideration of a new brownfield plan under those procedures in Act 3D1, and also to set the public hearing for Monday, October 27th, for consideration of the Nestle Down Bed and Breakfast project.
Thank you, Mr. McClellan. Commissioners, any questions, Mr. McClellan, on Nestle Down project? Okay.
Thank you very much.
We thank you for the presentations.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is appointments to boards and committees. We have Jesse Jones for the zoning, Board of Zoning Appeals, for a term ending February 15th, 2015. And we also have city recommendations for appointment by the county board to the Market County Transit Authority. We're putting forward two names, David Boyd and Tony Tolson, for terms ending 12/31/2016. Commissioners, what is your pleasure regarding this item? Commissioners, what is your pleasure regarding this item? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move we appoint Jess Jones to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending February 15th, 2015. And also, I move that we appoint David Boyd to the Marquette Transit Authority for a term ending December 31st, 2016.
The clarification, we don't appoint the transit authority, we're just submitting the names--
Recommend, yes.
Yeah. Both names? You have to submit two names.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Is there a second motion? Commissioner Campana?
Second.
Okay. Anything further, Commissioner Reynolds?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Anything further, Commissioner Campana?
Nothing further.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Reynolds, second by Commissioner Campana, to appoint Jesse Jones, the Board of Zoning Appeals, for a term ending February 15th, 2015, and recommend to the county board consideration of appointment of either David Boyd or Tony Tolson to the Marquette County Transit Authority for a term ending December 31st, 2016. All in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed to the motion, please say no. The motion is approved unanimously. We are now at that point in the meeting for a public comment. Comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name, physical address, in making public comments. Use the lectern in front of the commission. And we do have lights to time the comments. There's three minutes. The clock will start at three minutes. Count down to one minute. At one minute, the yellow light will illuminate solid, and at thirty seconds, the yellow light will start flashing. When time is expired, the red light will illuminate. Anyone wishing to address the commission during citizen comment?
Kelly Drake-Widward, 951 Highland Drive, president of the Upper Peninsula Community Rowing Club. Want to reserve time on item nine, I think is the rowing club lease, and make myself available for questions, if applicable, on, maybe it's number 14, for the rezoning. Also, just quickly to thank all you seasoned and not-so-seized professionals in the public interest who are patiently sorting through all this, and express appreciation for the many people that are participants of the rowing program that are here tonight that may want to hopefully not try your patience a lot, but share some thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Bob Kembensee, 306 North Sixth Street. I'd like to reserve time on item nine. And I wonder if, I don't know if anybody would or could answer this question, but the presentation that we just saw on the brownfield items, it would really be nice if somehow that first part on the hospital could be available on the city's website or something. I mean, that was like a fast-moving train that came through here, and I don't know if, you know, how many of you guys felt like you weren't run over by the train either. So if that's possible, it would be nice.
We don't answer questions during this period.
I know you don't.
Mr. McClellan indicated an affirmative.
Last Wednesday, I came to Mr. Vita's community office hours at the library to talk to him about the very item that was before us earlier, Duke Life Point, and some of my concerns. And those concerns really arise because, you know, when Duke Life Point first showed up in town, it was like, wow, look at this, you know, these guys are coming in, they're going to buy the hospital. They started making some claims. We're going to have fifty new doctors. We're going to do this, we're going to do that. Well, where are you going to get the patients to support this? I mean, there's some questions there. How are you going to build this thing up into something bigger if you don't have the patients to support it? So a little while after that, I guess they're going to have fifty new doctors, because it looks like fifty of the old doctors are leaving town. So, you know, it's like, these things come up, and it's like, it all doesn't, all the pieces don't seem to fit together. Then we see the press releases, you know, we're going to throw a roundabout out there in the middle of the highway. We're going to build a bridge over the highway at Grove Street. The city service center, we're going to take that property, and they're going to have to move out in six months. Totally unrealistic things. So I think there's a lot of concerns about what's happening here. And the concern that I had, and I expressed to Mr. Vita, was, you know, it seems to me that Duke Life Point is here, and they're steamrolling over the city. And I mentioned it before, who's watching the store for us? Or how are we going to be sure that they're not doing this? So there's a lot of questions about it. And three of you guys, you have one more meeting. Then we're going to have three new commissioners. And you existing four commissioners that are still going to be here, this is a challenge to Commissioner Reynolds and Commissioner Campana, to really jump in and get your feet wet on some of this stuff. You haven't said much for the, you know, for the past year, but you're not newbies anymore now. You're, I don't know, sophomores or something?
Time is expired, Commissioner Kembensee?
Let's be vigilant on this.
Time is expired.
Kenzie Parsons, 1023 North Front Street. I would like to reserve time for item number nine as well. Am I jumping the line?
Didn't go.
So this relates to both item eight, I believe, and nine. My name is Alexis Rainey, 406 Lake Shore Boulevard, here in the city.
Are you just speaking to those items, or are you wanting to speak when those items come up?
I'll speak now. So I have a prepared statement, which I'll read to you. The Marquette City Commission is currently considering lease and license of public land along Lake Superior shoreline for the construction of an estimated 5,000-square-foot boathouse for the Upper Peninsula Community Rowing Club. Construction of the proposed boathouse would be along the shore in the Founder's Landing area. It has changed a couple times, so I'll just group it as the area. And it would require rezoning for the building to be placed there. In theory, this sounds like a wonderful idea to have a public, non-motorized, small watercraft access to Lake Superior in the lower harbor, and a safe storage facility for the watercraft and nonage news. It is my understanding that the citizens of this city have some concerns about a private entity leasing public shoreline. And this stems from the idea that a majority of the boathouse would only be accessible to due-paying members of the UPCRC. Some citizens have also voiced concern about the loss of undeveloped beachfront, citing it as one of Marquette's greatest assets. There is also concern about the long-term legal and maintenance responsibilities for this facility. And I would point out, as an analogy, the Shyras Pool. I believe that there's a solution that I haven't heard anybody discuss yet, so I thought I would offer it up. It's my understanding that the abandoned docks and pilings at Founder's Landing that are located directly to the south of the Or Dock were the subject of an EPA brownfield assessment grant. The city was awarded a DNR grant, I believe, might be DEQ, to remove or cap the pilings, and plans have been developed but not finalized to create a multiple-use recreation-based facility in that area. This area is part of a bond that's associated with a larger brownfield redevelopment project in the lower harbor as a whole. I suggest that the city commission and the brownfield redevelopment authority include the construction of a proposed boat storage facility at this location, since there's already a grant. By redeveloping a currently abandoned or decommissioned area, I believe it's been decommissioned since 1971, and locating the UPCRC's boathouse here, no undeveloped beach would be sacrificed for this project. This plan would help steer any future development of the lower harbor Or Dock to allow for safe harbor on the south side of the Or Dock, possibly for non-motorized small craft use. Citing the UPCRC facility in this location would also negate the need for you guys to rezone the area in Founder's Landing, which I believe is being proposed right now for the location of this boathouse. This plan requires something that is often lacking, which is patience, because I understand that money will not be available for, I don't know, an undisclosed period of time. There really is no reason, in my mind, to rush into the project. I think it's a good project, but I believe that if there is already grant money available to develop what was abandoned and decommissioned, perhaps we should look at reuse instead of developing undeveloped areas of beachline in the city of Marquette. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Don Podman, 1027 North Front Street in Marquette. City Commissioners, I would propose that this proposed boathouse and lease agreement has some odoriferous features to it. Three of the leading members of the rowing club are wives of the city manager, the city attorney, and a sitting commissioner, Mr. Campana. I wonder if the husbands of these ladies are so strongly orientated to allowed and locating this boat clubhouse facility to be, are these officials more interested in protecting their family life than they are in protecting the city of Marquette? I understand that the manager has recused himself from the project. I have a question. How is a manager/leader allowed to recuse when he should be very active in serving the city's needs and wants? Second question, did he in fact actually recuse himself from debate or input? Management appointed Mr. Angelie as assistant manager for a one-time effort. The effort was to locate the proposed project in acceptable location to the rowing club, to the rowing club. A further task was to have a zoning change made to accommodate this project. These things were accomplished, and now we are here for the full commission to act out of the due diligence, and probably approve the lease agreement written by Mr. Keefe, husband of one of the leaders. On all occasions where and when this topic was discussed, the leader said they would raise the money needed to build and maintain the new special-purpose building that the city doesn't want to own, and that the city would not have to use any tax dollars for anything done for the rowing club. This lease agreement, which I've read quite carefully, has been written by Mr. Keefe. We should be more able to protect the interests of our city than wives. This agreement does not require any club member to be personally responsible for promises of total building costs and costs of all repairs and upkeep to the boathouse property from its inception. Corporate responsibility is not enough. Insist on somebody signing on the dotted line, like when people rent, when people buy, you tie it up with personally, severally, all of the things. You guys have duty to tie it up to. Maybe your wife would like to sign personally for you, Dave. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on item nine. These are my opinions. You're reminded that the misters are omitted from these comments for lack of time. You stole five of our eight minutes solely because four of you lacked the guts or the ability to face the allegations of one. This all centers around your refusal to take responsibility for yourselves. September 29th, you heard partial quotes and dates of my recommendations to build the boathouse at the present site, yet you doomed a stunning woodland until your own cohorts threatened to sue you, likely with money that you couldn't match. Their influence forced you to rescind your vote. You wouldn't have chickened out this way for a roomful of ordinary people. None of you guilty six in your closing comments offered any apology or explanation for the needless division and angst you caused, a major blunder despite coin's insinuation that the matter was trivial, to ruin a priceless woodland on an historic lakefront. You also failed to address why we have public comment when you're not willing to use it. This boathouse deal is plain evidence of you governing in a world of who's who instead of what's right. Again, why did six of you ignore my site suggestion ten times, bent on leveling those gorgeous woods? While I recounted the examples on September 29th, Nimi looked down, conducting other business for at least half the comment with that stupid timer running. He realizes this keeps my comments flowing because they're timed to three minutes, leaving me no time to tell him to look up and get civilized, like I'm telling him right now. It's all part of the game he plays. You actually failed to listen while the very instances of your previous failures to listen were quoted. The rules dictate that all discourse runs through you, yet you lend certain citizens little more than a forehead. The epitome of stupidity is to repeat the same stupid behavior while someone is documenting the ramifications of the identical stupidity from the previous instance. Six of you have caused needless heartache for many, so be honest and answer for yourselves. You also refused to respond to the allegation that you discriminated against a citizen at the end of his three minutes. I filed a request of the Attorney General for his review of your demeanor toward a man who spoke critically of your process on August 11th at the 16-minute, 52-second mark. The attorney will compare this to the courtesy you afforded the area's biggest developer on August 25th at the 24-29 mark. August 11th, you jumped on the bandwagon nonstop until the man sat down, while on August 25th, you gave the developer the courtesy of a soft reminder and let him continue for another nine seconds with no further interruption until the man sat down on his own. The sergeant-at-arms never rose to remove him. Citizens are urged to delve into the record regarding all these accusations and to decide for themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Verito. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Hearing none, we'll close the citizen comment portion of the agenda, and we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, we've removed items 8I and 8K, which are respectively items number 14 and 15 on our agenda. And we also have to remove a check from the bill's payable, which is payable to Commissioner Reynolds, check number 62426, in the amount of $54. Commissioners, what is your pleasure with the consent agenda as changed or amended? Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
I motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you. Is there support for the motion? Second? Commissioner Kembensee?
Support.
Thank you. Anything further, Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anything further, Commissioner Kembensee?
No.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Protem Stonehouse and second by Commissioner Kembensee to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the check payable to Commissioner Ryan, or Reynolds, excuse me. All Commissioners in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed to the motion, please say no. The motion passes unanimously. Now we need to take the, Commissioner Coine?
Point of order, if I could. You've moved 8I to 14. Would it not make more sense to deal with 8I, which is rezoning of the city property owned at Founder's Landing, first before dealing with item number nine? I feel a little uncomfortable granting a lease before we have rezoned it. That doesn't make a lot of sense.
Well, we can't do the rezoning tonight. We can only set a public hearing on the rezoning issue. If the rezoning doesn't pass, then the lease would be null and void if we approve it tonight. We have to put out a notice and a public hearing, for a public hearing at the next meeting.
Is that what it says on the agenda item?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We still have to approve the check to Commissioner Reynolds. What is your pleasure, Commissioners? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we pay Commissioner Reynolds, reimburse her for expenses.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Campana?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, second by Commissioner Campana, to pay Commissioner Reynolds the check, number of 62426, in the amount of $54. All in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed to the motion, please say no. And Commissioner Reynolds abstains. So the motion is approved, six to zero with one abstention. Okay, we are now moving forward to item number nine. City Clerk, would you read the background information, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, at the September 8, 2014, Marquette City Commission meeting, the city commission approved the location for the UPCRC facility, as well as direct staff to complete specific functions. One of the functions was to direct the city attorney to prepare a lease between the city and the UPCRC for use of city property located at Founder's Landing. A first reading was presented to the city commission at the September 29, 2014, city commission meeting, with the second reading scheduled for the October 14, 2014, city commission meeting. Two modifications have been made to the originally presented lease. The modifications occur in sections 3.2 and 8.1. The modified lease has been prepared and attached for city commission review and approval. Fiscal effect, none by this act. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, approve the lease as presented. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. We have a number of citizens who wish to address this item. Ms. Kelly Drake Woodward?
Hello. We began this process with a presentation to the Harbor Advisory Committee in May of 2013, and the first presentation to you all in July of 2013. Since then, we've met with two other city advisory bodies and many times with the city commission with positive recommendations at every step. It's been almost a year and a half in the formal public process involving four different sets of drawings and three different locations. I just say this so that the people here will understand that there's been no rush in this public process. I want to thank those who are here looking out for the city's interest and the public interest. It's a really tough job. It requires a balanced perspective, and I think this perspective should be informed via knowledge of past partnerships, the sponsoring organization, and the likelihood of imagined impacts. The city has had beneficial relationships with many nonprofit organizations who provide public recreation, and wonderful public facilities have been created or maintained through such partnerships. The UPCRC has an 11-year history as a nonprofit recreation provider in the city of Marquette. We have faithfully executed multiple annual lease agreements with the city. Our membership is continually growing along with the diversity of our programs, which include serving high school youth program and adult community programs. We have proposed a context-sensitive, low-impact building to support water recreation in the city. We have taken the entire financial burden on ourselves, and we offer to provide many public amenities, including boat storage facilities, public observation deck, handicap-accessible launch dock, public parking, and restrooms. We are also prepared to cover all future costs to maintain, operate, and repair the building and the grounds. Our confidence in our ability to do this is based on historic financial data and trend projections, ranging from one analysis that we have of static growth to another analysis of a continuation of our current growth trends. It's also based on anticipated revenues from public boat storage and for boat storage of our other project partners, not just the UPCRC. We have been told that the lease terms are pretty standard for the city's past practices. Even so, the lease has been modified to address expressed concerns. We offer a long-term commitment to the city, and we ask for one also in return. We will be asking for money from the community in the public trust for this purpose. It doesn't make sense to let us collect funds in this way, which is probably a three-year process, build the proposed structure, which is probably another two-year process, and then have no assurance that we'll be able to occupy it and provide the promised recreational programs. There is a lease term, there is a term in the lease that allows the city to terminate this agreement with 30 days' notice if we do not perform the requirements of the lease. I think this project offers the community very little risk and many public benefits.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. The next one wishing to address this is Mr. Bob Kam Benzey.
Bob Kam Benzey, 306 North Sixth Street, Marquette. I guess I have the same questions about the lease I had two weeks ago. Going back to Acting City Manager Angeli's recommendation, written recommendation to the commission at the September 8 meeting, and Commissioner Coin's motion to... He motioned that Mr. Angeli's proposal was what his motion was. And I sent you an email today, and I said, again, I don't understand why there seems to be such a large problem preparing a lease document for the UPCRC as directed in the motion by Commissioner Coin, which was seconded and approved by the commission at your September 8, 2014 meeting. You need to reread the motion, which is Acting Manager Angeli's proposed recommendation for a five-year lease. That's the number five. You have in front of you a proposed 25-year lease, which also has many other considerations beyond the five-year fundraising and pre-construction period which the motion asked for. You need to play part of the video from the September 8, 2014 city commission meeting, more particularly starting at minute 36.30. At minute 36.35, Commissioner Ryan asks, "It is my..." Commissioner Ryan's understanding that we are asking the attorney to prepare a five-year lease to give the club time to raise funds and begin construction. At minute 36.50, Attorney Keefe answers, "Yes, that it would likely take up to five years to fund it and build it, and that you, the city, would enter into a new lease for operation and maintenance whenever that is completed." At minute 38.00, Commissioner Stonehouse states, "It is his..." Commissioner Stonehouse's understanding that we, the city, is giving the club five years to find the money to construct the building and fund the maintenance. It appears from the minutes of the meeting and this video of the meeting that there is no confusion about what was asked for in the lease. Attorney Keefe is providing some of the answers to the commission's questions, and by his answers, would appear to understand the motion and the proposed terms. Why then does the proposed lease say 25 years and not five years? And why is this also an operational and maintenance lease spanning 25 years when that was to be a new lease to be entered into if and when the club raised the funds and plans were approved and construction was ready to commence? With all of the available documentation, minutes in the video, what seems to be the problem was getting the terms of the lease correct?
Thank you, Mr. Kam Benzey.
Tinsley Parsons, 1023 North Front Street, Marquette, Michigan. I've been a member of the UPCRC for 10 years. I've been volunteering my time as a Level 2 certified coach for the last eight years. I've been also the crew coach for NMU for four years, and that's all volunteer positions. So as a rowing enthusiast in this community, I'm disappointed that there's still so much misunderstanding and confusion and disinformation out there about the UPCRC and this proposed community boathouse project. We've been dealing with this for about four years now, publicly for, I think Kelly may have said, a year or so now, but it's not been a fast project. And it's sad to think that even my neighbor is misinformed on our rowing club, when I thought there was open communication lines and we only live two doors down from each other. So I apologize for wasting your time here again, with me standing here once again and telling you these facts again, but I would like to revisit these facts for everyone else here so they can spread the correct information. The community boathouse will house rowing equipment for both the UPCRC and the NMU rowing clubs. It will be below-grade and underground, levelled with the bike path. That includes an observation deck on top for all to enjoy, and will house rowing shells up to 60 feet long for both clubs. The community boathouse will provide rack space inside and outside for the public to rent and store their human-powered watercraft, that's kayaks, canoes, paddleboards, et cetera. Rowing is a calm water sport. We don't row in white caps, and rowing, unlike paddle sports, requires distance because it only takes six and a half minutes to row one mile. So the calm water and open distance at Founder's Landing is why we choose to lease that location from the city as our current launching location. We also lease the retail space under the current observation deck, so we have a good track record with the city in our lease agreements. Every year, the UPCRC provides adult learn-to-row programs for men and women of all ages, and has a very successful youth program, 18 members this year for high school-aged youth. The cost is $155 and $100 a year respectively, and is $155 for rowers with previous rowing experience, and those fees include instruction and the use of equipment and boats that can cost $13,000 or more. If anyone feels they cannot afford the annual dues, there are scholarships available. The UPCRC is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization run entirely by volunteers, such as myself, and we do it because we love the sport and enjoy sharing it and teaching it to others. The UPCRC is safety-conscious. We wear PFDs while rowing on Lake Superior, and we've had a clean track record for our entire, I believe it's 11 years now. We coordinate with the Coast Guard to provide person-in-the-water rescue training to our members free of charge, and again, we are happy to report that we have never had to employ that training. The inclusion of a removable dock will extend our season by at least a month on either side, giving us a season of six months or more, and the ADA accessible dock will provide easy launching facilities for everyone. The UPCRC will raise funds necessary for construction completion and continued maintenance of the facility. The money will not come from the city. The community boathouse project will enhance waterfront access and can benefit everyone in this community by being a draw for tourists and residents alike, and the beauty and the aesthetics of human-powered water sports on Lake Superior will be there for everyone to enjoy. So thank you for your time again.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. Mr. Frank Jeff Barito?
Frank Jeff Barito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. You've duplicated the same lousy drawing in tonight's agenda packet as the one that appeared on September 8, on which night you were asked to provide a decent drawing. Your lack of a better depiction by this time is unacceptable, if not dubious. For example, the building doesn't seem oversized on the drawing until we imagine 5,780 square feet, like three small houses, if squared at 76 feet per side. The size of the building weighs heavily on tonight's lease decision because spot zoning at this site is unavoidable, even though I've advocated for this site since the beginning, but not to build a warehouse. Get us better drawings similar to the one for the wooded site. Tonight's reading entails what would require a rezoning request from public use area to conservation and recreation. Opponents have a point that this would take away from most public use of the parcel, especially being that 85% of the structure is not for public use, plus the enormous amount of outdoor staging. The staging area is shown in white as opposed to green for the grassy areas. What surface is proposed there? Administrative Standard 80.60 states, "Consideration shall be given to the location, size, and character of use to determine if the use will be in harmony with the intent and appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is situated and will not be detrimental to the orderly development of adjacent districts. Your fulfillment of this zoning obligation at this visually sensitive spot boils down to the size, the construction, and preservation of the view shed. Development there cannot help but be orderly in the shadow of those townhouses, which are just as spot-zoned as the proposed boathouse site. Hold off on leasing this parcel until we have received a due chance to analyze drawings and determine the building's size and situation in relation to the property and adjacent land uses. Also depict the rerouting of the North Country Trail to the east of any new structure to satisfy the still-relevant Lakeshore Task Force recommendations." September 29, Ms. Kam Benzey mentioned the impact of a railing. This also ties into the quoted administrative zoning standard, especially being the site is mere feet from our priceless shoreline. Look into installing a glass barrier instead of a railing. If handled properly, the boathouse could be a great asset visually and from a utilitarian standpoint. Ms. Kam Benzey is the first member in 20 years to consider the impact of railings on visual quality. The rest of you care less. In theory, I disagreed with her dissenting vote against a community boathouse. We haven't spoken, but her reason can only boil down to a lack of trust. Just look across the road at your glitzy townhouses. We await an explanation for your gross mishandling of this item and how we progressed from the wooded location to the 25-year commitment before us now. All this when you were repeatedly told from the get-go exactly where the boathouse belonged. If the pilings can be redeveloped for the boathouse, that would be even better yet.
Thank you, Mr. Barito. Well, that's the end of the citizens desiring to comment on this item. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Coin?
Your Honor, I move we approve the lease as presented to us.
Is there a second for the motion? Commissioner Ryan? Okay. Commissioner Coin, anything further?
I don't have anything further right now.
Okay. Commissioner Ryan?
It's just hard to make... To understand how this issue has become so contentious. There was a time at an earlier meeting when I was a younger commissioner. I wasn't ever a young commissioner. I started this fairly late. When I said this was fun, it was democracy in action. Well, this hasn't been fun, I'll tell you that. You know, this group's been at this for a long time. I look at this, you know, the light I look at it is this: We have so many groups in our community who do outstanding things. You know, they've created museums, they've created art centers, they've created soccer fields, they've created baseball fields, they've created so many things, and they're all groups like this. They set out to create something good in the community. And I have to give it to this group for persistence because they've been foiled at just about every corner they've come to. You know, we talk about, well, we're gonna give away this land on the waterfront. We have two marinas on the waterfront, which are no different than this. The marinas serve less people than this will. The marinas serve people from both in the community and out of the community. The marinas are very private places, and I'm not against marinas. I think we need marinas in the city of Marquette. But I think we also need a marina for the group that wants to row the boats. And here, this group is willing to pay for it themselves, so... I understand that, you know, there are people who oppose, and they certainly have that right to be, but I think it's been kind of unfair, some of the criticism that's been raised of the organization, because they truly are a community group just trying to accomplish something good. And I know some people don't want it there, and I accept that, but I think we've got to move forward and get something done, and I think this is the right way to go. You know, we've heard complaints, concerns about whether this building is going to block views and create other problems. I think the group has gone to whatever length they can to create something that's going to fit in with the landscape and still accomplish what they have to do, so I'm pleased to support this proposal.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Kam Benzey?
I have a question and then some comments. I guess I'll ask the question first. When did the 25-year lease come into play? Because I don't think this was done publicly, so who made that determination to put the 25 years in there? If it didn't come through an open meeting, I guess I'd like to know that.
I guess I can answer that question. Staff drafted the lease and presented it to us.
Okay. That's what I was looking for, that there really wasn't any community or commission direction on that. I'd like to begin with my comments. On March 10, 2014, the city commission voiced strong concerns about not taking on any additional liabilities to the taxpayers by owning another facility. Six to one, they said, "We will not take on any additional liabilities, and we absolutely do not want to own this facility." So when the citizens and taxpayers of the city of Marquette heard that the Commissioners directed the city attorney to come up with a five-year lease, they organized and came up with over 600 signatures. They wanted public forums on this, similar to what happened when Founder's Landing was planned. They came to us with those signatures, and this commission largely ignored them. They were told the signatures weren't legal and didn't mean anything. Citizens took out a formal petition for a referendum then. No privately-owned or leased buildings on public property east of La- No privately owned or leased buildings on public property east of Lake Shore Boulevard. At a work session in July, the city commission said, "Fine, we'll make it a public building." This voided the citizen petition for the referendum, so once again, the citizens came together, and they were shot down. The compromise was supposed to be that the rowing club was moving the building north next to the hotel, and it was to be considerably decreased in size. What came back to the city commission in the August meeting was a larger boathouse, and the labels were missing. The building got bigger. Public space is only 880 square feet, just roughly 80%. And now with the rezoning, we are opening up a whole new series of legalities, especially when a lease so poorly written does not protect the taxpayers from the liability of owning such a facility. I'd like to go through the staff comments, even though the parcel was moved north, I think they're still very valid. And I guess I do have a question of staff, how we're not going to use any public tax dollars for this when so much city staff time is going to have to be devoted to this project. Comments from the engineering department. This is a brown filled site and soils, and a provision would be required in the plans that would be required to be left on-site, meaning if you dig in the soil, you gotta leave the soil there. Additionally, a provision would be required in the plans that would address handling of hazardous materials if encountered on-site during construction. If collaboration with city staff is necessary, are staff resources available? What would be ongoing maintenance costs? Public kayak storage presents liability and security issues, and I guess I want to know if the rowing club covers this. It's not in the lease. So, who is liable for the dock launch? I think we asked that from the very beginning, we've never gotten an answer. Water service would require tapping into the 16-inch water main located on Lake Shore The question got brought up, how would concentrated stormwater runoff to Lake Superior be prevented? Even with the additional parking, now is there adequate parking available? I think we got an email right before the meeting from the owners of the hotel that this concerns them. The fetch to the shore is up to 10 miles. Large waves will occur. I think we saw this when the boats were damaged in the last storm. The lake water levels are also going up 18 inches in a year. We're gonna build this, how many feet above the lake level? Final plans would require proposed dimensions, elevations, profiles, materials, et cetera. Again, ask any builder up here or any homeowner if they want to own a flat roof, sodded building. Public works. The recollection of the outcome from the public process for Founder's Landing in the late 90s was that there would be nothing built on the lakeside of the road with the exception of two public pavilions in which storage for non-motorized boats would be incorporated. Has the DEQ and Army Corps of Engineers been contacted for special requirements to see if the project is allowable? Have other locations been evaluated? Community services. I'm a bit cautious of the grant and business plan. The grants are avail, the grants available for these types of projects include MDNR trust fund projects and waterways. We have specifically not answered the question if this group is allowed to go after those grants, which are earmarked for the next five years out. Would the facility be accessible to the public and to what extent? Planning department. The community master plan in 2004 includes a chapter called Waterfront Opportunities in which an upper harbor preferred plan and a lower harbor preferred plan were developed to help direct appropriate water uses for the harbor areas. The recommendations followed from a series of task force meetings, involvements with waterfront stakeholders, and public participation events. The lower harbor preferred plan indicates that indeed, a canoe kayak beach and storage facility would be appropriate north of Gaines Rock at the proposed South Railroad development. It was specifically recommended to incorporate this boat storage into a public pavilion, not a closed locked building. The Lake Shore Development Task Force was created by the Marquette City Commission in June of 1998, and I'm guessing this is why we had so many of the previous mayors sign the petition, and it was to develop a report and recommendation to assist the city commission and the citizens of Marquette and the governing boards in decision-making concerning what the public and private development along the lake shore within the city's jurisdiction should look like. The task of the committee was to examine the competing values of preserving natural heritage, environmental quality of the lake shore relative to the potential for economic development, and identify those areas of potential conflict. Final report and recommendations was presented to the city commission on March 29th, 1999. Specific recommendations were made for the entire length of the city lake shore by increments as follows. It is paramount that the middle third of the property from south front street east to south, east to Lake Superior, and from Genesee Street north to Rock Street, he left his green space. G, east of the bike path, footpath for the entire length of the area, land should be left undeveloped with top priority given to the preservation of the environment. The only exception to this requirement would be a boardwalk between the Ordock and the north bank of the Wetstone Creek near the sand beach. In the master plan, 87% of citizens polled that participated said that preservation and access to the lake shore were very important to them. I don't know how putting a 6,000 square foot building is reassuring them that they'll have access to the lake. Lastly, I'd like to just make some comments about an email that was sent to us from a resident, John Sondreger, because I think that these are paramount in what we're discussing. As a commissioner, I'm not up here to determine the positive things each nonprofit organization does. I'm up here to do two things, and it's finance and it's policy. And the policies we're setting in this example are atrocious, and I would say that if we're gonna set policies like this, we should expect that more are gonna keep coming our way, and we should be prepared to deal with those. In Mr. Sondreger's email, he commented that after the Monday, August 18th work session on the boathouse, "Free rent." Several of the commissioners said the city would charge rent. Notice in the lease, we're not charging rent now. This plan calls for free use. The only people that will pay rent for the facility will be the folks in the 880 square foot public area, not the almost 5,000 square foot private area for members only. Just like the marina, several of the commissioners said, "It's just like the marina." So if it's just like the marina, we should treat it so. If you look at the funds used to build the marina, you will see a great deal of grant money. You will never see this in budget because it was shown as revenue way back when the marinas were built. This will be no different. If the city gets 500,000 in a grant and the rowing club puts in an additional 100,000, the city will still have a depreciable asset on its books for $600,000. Depreciation, after all, has more to do with replacing the asset and repairing it rather than paying for the old one. The current lease with the city and the UPCRC is between $2,000 and $3,000. We're dealing with an almost million dollar building. This is black and white, different. Grant funding. He can't stress enough how the city owns the grants. Again, these are grants that we have earmarked for Presque Isle, for Tours Park, for the Kaufman Sports Complexes. These are the same grants that the commission might allow this group to use and come before bathrooms that are 40 years old, facilities that haven't been upgraded in 30-plus years. I think we need to answer that question in the vague lease that's presented before us. Economic reality. With a small number of people to benefit, the rowing club has a very long road to go. It will be years before they secure the funds just to build, and if the city does the right thing and charges rent to cover the sinking fund over 20 years, just like we do with the marinas, this would be in the range of $30,000. If you add, say, $15,000 in annual maintenance, the UPCRC would have to come up with $45,000 annually on top of their operating budget, heat, lights, water. With the current dues of $150 and about 100 members, this is unworkable. So I think for everyone out there that thinks that the people in this city are somehow targeting this group, that if you think me as the lone vote against this is against your group, I am not. But I think when I have to deal with financial liability as well as policy, this doesn't cut it. We're not there yet. A cost for a similar piece of land at Founder's Landing is worth approximately $1 million. Private taxpayers in the vicinity from the Fraziers all the way down through Founder's Landing, the taxable value is over $14 million. The reason why people are so upset about this is it's not a parking lot that we lease to the YMCA for a dollar so that we could help, so that they could help us with our recreational programming for children. This is the taxpayers' land that they're still paying over $300,000 a year for. How is this a public building? And I'd like to ask this to the rowing club members here today, when 80% of this building will be locked to the public and you have to be a member to go in there? If you want to know what the community's mad about, it's not your group and the good things you do. It's the fact that the city taxpayers think they're being taken for a ride.
Any other commissioners?
I can't let that stand. I'm aggravated and I'm embarrassed. The term "a lease so poorly written," that was done by our city attorney. That was done by a very competent lawyer who was in fact president of the Michigan Bar Association. And to make that kind of comment, "a lease so poorly written," is just, I can't say anymore of that. Issues concerning the construction of the facility and any concerns that engineering may have with that all go through something called Site Plan Review. And that's where you bring a project, you bring your structure, what you're building, where you want to build it, the engineers, and everybody takes a cut at it, and all of these problems with drainage and how you may hook up to utility or not hook up to utility or where you cite it, et cetera, are all solved during that process. This is hardly giving them license to build a building. That hasn't happened. It's a lease of the land and go ahead and we'll see where that goes. And I would again stipulate that by this lease, the rowing club is responsible for all expenses related to that building. That includes the structure, the building, the utilities, the maintenance, everything. That's what the lease says. So to make charges that this is gonna cost and that's gonna cost and that's not accounted, it's all in that lease. And the lease again is available, it's on the website, it's part of the agenda packet. I would make the comment too that the harbor master plan does call for this type of facility roughly in that location, so it's not something invented from whole cloth. The idea of grants, somehow grants would be taken away from other projects for this. The city commission has the responsibility to allocate grants any way it so chooses. That's what we're here for, the liberative body making those decisions based on priorities within the city. An individual organization like the rowing club cannot go out on its own and get a national resources trust fund grant. They can't do it. That's got to be something that only a government agency, city, can do. So the idea that the rowing club's gonna latch on to a big NRC grant and use that money simply is illegal. They can't do that. It is my understanding that indeed the Corps of Engineers, DEQ, et cetera, have indeed looked at the property and said this is okay, but that too again becomes part of the permitting process formally and part of the site plan review process by extension, and you're certainly a long way from getting there. We're not charging them rent. They're giving us a building worth almost a million dollars by the time the dust settles. They're covering all operational expenses on the building, and we're gonna ask for rent too? I mean, there's gotta be some logic to this, and that's the way the lease is written. So I'm not embarrassed at all about not charging rent. Not when I'm looking what the city is getting and the opportunity for continued lakefront access for everybody, for all of our citizens. And if we want to look at the physically handicapped, this is a wonderful way that they too can help participate in the sport. And those are comments that I think we all need to latch on to, we all need to be aware of, and just focus on the value that this offers to the city and to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Stonehouse. The hour's getting late, so I will ask for the question.
I just have one last comment, and then I'll be done. My comments only include the fact that I was also under the assumption, as Bob Campenzi was under the assumption, that we were doing something to a five-year term and to a 25-year one that we would do after. And due to that fact, I will be voting no, not because I don't support the UPCRC, not for any other reason. I still will approve the zoning later on, just for that reason alone. And also, I was under the standing, we did get a letter from the Larsons down at the hotel down there that indicated that they were not okay with parking being used, and I thought I was under the assumption, and I was told before that they were. So those are my two concerns at this point, and that is all.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. It's been moved by Commissioner Coyne, supported by, or second by Commissioner Ryan, to approve the lease. Let's see, where are we on this? To approve the lease as presented. All in favor, say yes.
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 Anyone opposed, say no.
No.
The motion is approved, 5 to 2. Now we're on new business. The next item is number 10, Pioneer's. We've got 10 minutes, we're gonna move quick.
I'm voting against them.
Okay. Is there a motion to extend the time in the event we need it?
So moved.
Commissioner Coyne?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of that motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, please say no. The time will be extended as needed at 10 o'clock. City clerk, please read the item on Pioneer Surgical Technologies' Letter of Intent.
Thank you, Mayor. Background. On September 16th, 2014, Pioneer Surgical Technologies, Inc., submitted a letter of intent, LOI, which sets forth an understanding and/or intentions of Pioneer Surgical to donate certain parcels of land to the city of Marquette strictly for the use as part of the proposed Clark Lambros Beach Park. The subject parcels of land are identified in the project development plan as first priority park of Lot 3 and Lot 6. The final approval of the land donation is subject to the appropriate Pioneer Board approval and execution of a deed. The LOI is in effect until the earlier of the executed deed or September 1, 2015. Fiscal effect, upon executing a deed of the subject property, upon executing a deed, the subject property will be taken from the general front tax roll and included in the park, city park inventory in perpetuity. Recommendation, direct the city attorney to negotiate with Pioneer Surgical Technologies, Inc., in developing a deed to transfer land for use as part of the proposed Clark Lambros Beach Park. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure with this item?
Your honor?
Yes?
I would direct, move we direct the city attorney to negotiate with Pioneer Surgical Technologies, Inc., in developing a deed to transfer land for use as part of the proposed Clark Lambros Beach Park.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Is there a second to the motion? Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Second motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
Just, I think this is a very generous offer, and we'd like to, I certainly would like to thank the Pioneer Surgical Technologies, Inc., which I think operates under a different name, RTI now, and also apologize to them for having to sit here till 10 o'clock to be able to have a... And also apologize to them for having to sit here until 10 o'clock to be able to have us say this. But I, you know, I think this is certainly going to enhance the park area, it's going to make what's there better. And I certainly personally think we, as I say, owe them a debt of gratitude for making this offer.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Anything further, Commissioner Stonehouse?
No, I think Commissioner Ryan said it all.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Stonehouse, to direct the city attorney to negotiate with Pioneer Surgical Technologies, Inc., in developing a deed to transfer land for use as part of the proposed Clark-Lambrose Beach Park. All commissioners in favor of the motion, please say yes.
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 Any commissioners opposed the motion, please say no. The motion is approved unanimously. City Clerk, would you please read the background material on the City Commission Advisory Committee Review Subcommittee Final Plan?
Thank you. Mayor. Background: The City Commission convened a work session on February 6, 2014, to discuss commission-appointed authorities, boards, committees, and commissions. At the work session, the commission identified a need to update the mission statements of various entities that were established by the City Commission, as well as develop an assessment methodology to be used in evaluating progress towards their goals and missions. As a result, the commission then appointed three city commissioners to serve on an Advisory Committee Review Subcommittee for a one-year period ending February 24, 2015. On October 6, 2014, the City Commission convened another work session to discuss the Subcommittee's final plan and recommendations. The plan and affected forms and policies are attached. Fiscal effect: None by this action. Recommendation: Accept the attached plan, forms, and policies. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, what is your pleasure with this item? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we accept the plan.
Forms and policies as recommended by the committee.
Is there a second to this motion? Commissioner Campana?
A second.
Okay. Commissioner Ryan, anything further on this motion?
Yes, we had a work session, a public work session, and discussed this at length. I want to thank really the committee, which I believe included Commissioners Stonehouse, Campana, and Reynolds. Put a lot of work into it. They didn't just sit down and brainstorm it. They met with, met with all the committees, talked to them, got some input from them, and as a result, came up with a good plan for us to go forward. And so I think we should move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Campana, anything further?
Yes, I was a member of this committee. And yes, we had good meetings with each and every one of the advisory committees, and it was well worth it. And I think we got a lot of good information from them, and it was good for them to have us there, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Campana. Any other commissioners have anything to say about this? I just have one minor item. We discussed it during the work session, the issue of a charter change to allow employees to be on the, the, here it is, the, on committees. Charter, City Charter Limitations Subcommittee recognizes an issue with the requirements set forth in the charter where volunteers on city boards and committees, the committee recommends the city consider revision to the charter in one year regarding allowing city employees that work less than 100 hours currently on, concurrently on a city committee. I certainly understand the intent behind this. One is election workers who work one day a year should be allowed to serve on other committees, with the exception of the election board, naturally. But I, I could see if, I don't know how we would do, we would put in the charter a requirement that you can't work on, that employees who do not work more than 100 hours would be, would be entitled to do that. It seems like it's a pretty detailed thing to put in the charter, whereas charter language is generally more, more higher level. And I would have a concern that the, an advisory board subordinate to the city manager would be advising the city commission, his bosses, and it just, it is a natural clash. It just isn't the natural order of things. And so I do have concern about that. Would the makers of the motion consider perhaps setting that item aside for a future commission to deal with? Or all make a, a motion that we amend the motion to set that aside for a future commission to deal with?
By definition, a future commission has to deal with that because we don't have the power to change it. It's only your recommendation.
Well, I understand that, but I would, what we're doing is we're, we're saying that the city commission consider revision of the charter in one year regarding allowing. I don't want to even direct the city commission to, in one year, to consider this. Future commission would consider it as they, they desire or deem, you know.
And they would treat that recommendation exactly as they would have desired to do. We're not binding them in either.
I made a, a motion to amend the, the motion. Is there support? Point of work. Can theyers make motions? Sure. Traditionally, they, they don't, but they can. Is there a second? I guess the...
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Kembensee. I don't have anything more to, to discuss on the motion. Commissioner Kembensee, did you want to add anything?
Nothing further.
Okay. It's been moved by the mayor that we eliminate that item from the recommendation, amend the motion. It's been seconded by Commissioner Kembensee. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed to it, please say no.
No.
Motion fails, 2 to 5. Okay. Now we have the, the original motion to vote on. That is, it's moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Campana, to, excuse me, accept the attached plan, forms, and policies. All in favor of the motion, please say yes.
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 Anyone opposed to the motion, please say no.
No.
The motion, motion passes, 6 to 1. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is number 12, request to purchase a portion of city-owned property located between the 100 blocks of West Spring and West Main Streets. City Clerk?
Thank you, sir. Background: The city received the attached request to purchase the city-owned retaining wall located on a portion of parcel 0151030 located between the 100 blocks of West Spring and West Main Streets from Ms. F. Michelle Haley Esquire on behalf of her clients Patrick and Sherry Mont Caleri. In accordance with the city code, staff has reviewed the request and prepared a resolution authorizing the city manager to direct the sale of the property in accordance with ordinance number 611, real estate sales policy. Fiscal effect: To be determined based upon an appraisal of the property. Recommendation: Consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to direct the sale of the property in accordance with city code. Alternatives as directed by the commission.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure with this item? Commissioner Campana?
I say we make a resolution authorizing the city manager to direct the sale of the property in accordance with city code.
Okay. Is there a commissioner who seconds the motion? Commissioner Ryan?
Second the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Campana, anything further? Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
I just wonder if we could get a really short explanation from city staff as to what's happening here, just so people will understand. Because this is, this is not a big piece of property we're selling.
It's a wall.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's essentially a retaining wall that is between the open space and the Wells Fargo parking lot and the, and the building adjacent to it. And per the city real estate sales ordinance, there's a procedure that is outlined and you're simply following that. In order for the city commission to sell a piece of property, it has to do a resolution of intent to sell, has to be an appraisal on the property, and the property cannot be sold for less than 80% of that appraisal per the ordinance, which would follow a subsequent, a subsequent resolution would follow. So you're simply just following the process.
And the property has no value to us, but we know it.
I can't speak to that. That's to be determined by an appraiser.
I don't mean it has no value, but I'm saying it has no practical value to the city. It's not something the city uses for any purpose.
Your Honor, I could add, I could add to what Dennis said. Originally, there was an intent to sell resolution for the entire piece of property behind the Ordock Brewery, which included this piece. And it's my understanding that the owners of the Ordock have decided not to buy this abutment piece. Is that right, Dennis?
That's correct.
So this allows the city then to, you know, split that off, and this couple was interested in, in buying it, and that's why we're having this notice of, of intent to sell at this meeting.
Commissioner Coyne?
I have a question of the history of this. Is my memory wrong in that he, this, the people wanting to purchase this were going to sue the city because they alleged that the wall was damaging the building? And now why, I don't understand why they want to buy it? And what's up? I mean, what, that, what's going on?
I don't know if there was ever a threat to sue the city, but there was certainly concern about the liability that may attach to the city and why they want to buy it now, I don't know. Maybe Dennis does.
You know, I can give a very brief history. At one point in time, the city was going to take down the entire abutment during the time that that project was ongoing. There were some discussions between the building owners and the city, which involved review by counting building codes and others, and ultimately, it was decided to leave the abutment in place. Since then, there's been general inquiries over time about issues pertaining to liability and so on and so forth. And it seems that as of late, this best solution that has been identified probably over the fourth years is what we brought forward to you.
For, if I could, question. I was on the DDA when, when we, when we undertook this project, and there was rumblings about suing us if we didn't do something. And what the DDA did is, instead of taking down the entire wall, they left the, the structure up to support the adjacent building and ate it with brick and made it pretty, I guess.
I guess what I was suggesting is I don't remember getting a formal indication.
No, there was no point. Right. It was just discussions with, with us, the DDA.
It's extremely complicated. I mean, there's also a big iron beam on top of that building that ties it into Getz's building. So there's, I could be here all night.
Well, my question then really leads to, if we sell it to them, are we then absolved of any liability? Or are they going to say, well, you sold us a defective thing and blah, blah, blah? I need to know that before I vote.
And we would, we sell it to them, then they would assume all liability for it, would no longer belong to us. It's, and they understand what they're up against, literally.
Literally up against, thank you.
Pun intended.
Is that all, commissioners? Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner, the, all commissioners have addressed this issue? Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Campana, supported by, seconded by Commissioner Ryan, to authorize a, or approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to direct sale of the property in accordance with the city code. All in favor of the motion, please say yes.
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 Opposed to the motion, please say no. The motion is approved unanimously. The next item is termination Brownfield Plan for the former Lake Shore, Lake Shore, Inc. property. City Clerk, would you please read the background information?
Thank you, sir. Background: In reviewing information for the nestled-down bed and breakfast Brownfield Plan, a Brownfield Plan for the former Lake Shore, Inc. property was identified for the Superior Properties LLC development. The Lake Shore, Inc. Brownfield Plan was approved in 1998 by the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and the Marquette City Commission. The project proposed under the Lake Shore, Inc. Brownfield Plan includes the development of approximately 280 residential units and the conversion of three existing industrial buildings to commercially used by Superior Properties LLC. Portions of the project were completed, Brownfield tax capture was completed, and the balance of the project was not proceeded. The eligible property identified in the Lake Shore, Inc. Brownfield Plan includes the eligible property proposed under the nestled-down bed and breakfast Brownfield Plan, a site plan from the original Brownfield Plan, and an aerial photo which identifies both properties is attached. Recent amendments to Act 31 include provision for the termination of Brownfield Plans. Following Section 16B, the Brownfield Plan, Plan Amendment may be abolished or terminated according to the subsection, the subsection subject to all of the following. A, the governing body may abolish a Brownfield Plan when it finds that the purposes for which the plan was established are accomplished. B, the governing body may terminate a Brownfield Plan or Plan Amendment for an eligible property if the project for which eligible activities were identified in the Brownfield Plan or Plan Amendment fails to occur within, with respect to the...
I don't think you need to read the, the entire section law. I think you can skip to the meat of the...
Thank you, sir. In the case of Lake Shore, Inc. Brownfield Plan, a portion of the purpose of the Brownfield Plan has been accomplished, and a portion of the project did not proceed within five years. Both are requirements for Brownfield Plan termination. Because of this overlap of eligible property, the Lake Shore, Lake Shore, Inc. Brownfield Plan should be terminated and allow for a new Brownfield Plan for the nestled-down bed and breakfast to be approved. Section 168 requires the governing body, the Marquette City Commission, to terminate a Brownfield Plan attached to the resolution for consideration by the city commission to terminate the Lake Shore, Inc. Brownfield Plan. Fiscal effect: None. Recommendation: Adopt a resolution terminating the Lake Shore, Inc. Brownfield Plan. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, what is your pleasure with this item? Commissioner Coyne?
I move that we adopt a resolution terminating the Lake Shore Incorporated Brownfield Plan.
Commissioner Reynolds, your second motion?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Reynolds, to adopt a resolution terminating the Lake Shore, Inc. Brownfield Plan. Anything further, Commissioner Coyne?
Just to thank Mr. McClellan for a very clear description. I didn't feel railroaded or hurried. I thought it was very clear, as was the Brownfield for Duke Life Point. Thank you for your clarity.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Reynolds, anything further?
I just echo Commissioner Coyne.
Okay. Any other commissioner deciding to comment on the motion? Hearing none. It's been moved by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Reynolds, to adopt a resolution terminating the Lake Shore, Inc. Brownfield Plan. All in favor of the motion, please say yes.
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 Opposed to the motion, please say no. The motion is approved unanimously. The next item is number 14, which is the setting of a... Yeah, public hearing on rezoning of city-owned property at Founder's Landing. Commissioner Kembensee, you request that this be taken off. Have we discussed this ad infinitum sufficiently? Or do you have something more that you wanted to add?
We can vote on it, and then I'll just make my comment.
You mean, during the consideration of motion? Do you want to make a motion?
Nope.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we accept the planning commission... I move we accept the planning commission recommendation and schedule a public hearing for the October 27 regular City Commission meeting.
Okay. I guess I'm remiss. I could have put the city clerk through reading the background information. Does anyone really want that, or...okay. Is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Campana?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Campana, seconded by Commissioner Ryan, to accept the rezoning, the notice of rezoning for a public hearing of city-owned property at Founder's Landing. Anything further, Commissioner Ryan?
Just that all we're doing here is scheduling a public hearing.
Anything further than that? Commissioner Campana, anything further?
Nothing beyond that.
Commissioner Kembensee, did you want to comment?
Yes. I did attend the planning commission meeting when it took place last week. I sat in the back, and I did note that the planning chair, Steve Laurie, said that the planning commission did have three options when looking at this rezoning. One, they could deny the zoning request change. Two, they could table the zoning request until coming up with building zoning standards for this parcel. Three, they could pass the zoning with no building zoning standards for this parcel, which is what happened. So I would just like to point out that this parcel currently doesn't have any building standards, and I'm not really sure. Maybe the staff can fill us in if they plan to have that done by the time we have the
Guess I'm confused. They're rezoning this to conservation and recreation. Conservation and recreation has standards for development in the ordinance.
Setbacks and all of that, are those going to come?
Are you thinking that it's form-based code, or...
Right now, it has no building form standards at all. It has no standards. It's just kind of like a future public use area with zero standards whatsoever.
This would require a conditional use permit, is that correct?
Being rezoned to conservation and recreation, any structures between... Being rezoned to conservation and recreation, any structures between, I'm operating from memory, which is a dangerous thing to do with a zoning ordinance. Generally, any structures between Lake Shore Boulevard and Lake Superior are a conditional use permit that have to meet certain standards and criteria. I know a lot of those are related to public use and being open to the public, which were some of the challenges related to the previous discussion. I don't know off the top of my head what such standards are, although I believe there's probably the likelihood of a variance for some setback in there that we discussed, but I, I don't know those numbers off the top of my head.
Thank you, Mr. Stackwitz. Is that?
I guess I'd just like to point out that there was a member of the landing group there who spoke in favor of the boathouse, only if the boathouse doesn't block the condo's view. And I guess there was discussion about height, and I guess, I don't know, Mr. Stackwitz could tell us if height is addressed in this zoning?
I believe it is, but again, I don't know what standards are associated with that.
Commissioner Camenzey? Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by, I'm sorry, Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse?
Would it be reasonable to have that information available by, by next meeting?
Of course.
Thank you. Anyone else? I didn't need to cut off, you know, we've got to midnight.
You might.
It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Campana, to approve the, or not to, I guess, accept the planning commission recommendation and schedule a public hearing for the October 27th, 2014 regular city commission meeting. All in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed to the motion, please say no.
Can I change my vote to no? Sorry.
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Okay. The motion is approved six to one. Thank you. The next item, number 15, is similar. It's scheduling a public hearing for the, the Duke Life Point Brownfield Plan. Should we dispense reading the, the background memo, commissioners?
Please.
Okay, let's dispense. Commissioner Camenzey, you asked to take this off. Do you want to do any discussion before we make a motion, or does someone want to make a motion? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we schedule a public hearing for October 27th, 2014 regular city commission meeting to consider the DLP Marquette General Hospital Brownfield Plan.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse?
Second.
Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
Again, all we're doing is scheduling a public hearing.
Okay. Commissioner Stonehouse, anything further?
Nothing.
Okay. Any other commissioner wanting to discuss the motion? Commissioner Camenzey?
Just like it to be noted in the agenda that I do support Duke Life Point Hospital moving into this parcel. However, right now, we are a long, long way off in determining what services we may be able to partner with, and I have no doubt that the city workers are a little worried about what's going on. So I think what we need to do is take care of the taxpayers first, and everything that comes out of Public Works is a 24/7 operation, and make sure that with the estimated eight million we are assuming we're getting from the Brownfield, can we rebuild a service center and offer the same services? I think those questions need to be answered first before approving a public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Camenzey. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner, or Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse, to schedule a public hearing for the October 27th, 2014 regular city commission meeting to consider the Duke Life Point Marquette General Hospital Brownfield Plan. All commissioners in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed to the motion, please say no.
No.
The motion is approved on a six to one vote. Well, we're finished.
Not quite.
Aren't we? Well, I realize that. We will start with you, Commissioner Reynolds, for.
I don't have anything further this evening, other than I had the chance to go to the Berga Festival this weekend, and I only got to stay for an hour, but by far, one of the coolest festivals that they've done, and the fact is, within the three years, how, where it's come and what, what they're doing, it's just awesome. And the DDA in, in general, another person at the event had a, they were having a struggle setting up, and four different members from the DDA came and helped them set up their tents and helped them go get water from Breakers to set up their food, and it was, it was amazing, and it was great to watch, and that's, that is all.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. Commissioner Ryan?
After three hours, I run out of great repartee, so I, I would say that I enjoyed the presentation to the children's museum kids and the swearing in of the canine dog, but it kind of went downhill after that, so. I'm glad I'm going home.
Commissioner Coyne?
I would like to take a minute just again to wish happy birthday to Mrs. Hilton. She really is a role model for women in this community, and she's done a great job, and is a role model for all of us to follow in terms of service to her fellow persons. On a less positive note, I would like to just speak to the comment made about the wives of the commissioners and the city manager as to, frankly, I found that somewhat offensive. And whoever made that, I can't remember who did, doesn't know those wives, because I think they have the highest integrity and would not do what they were alleged to be doing. And I think also, the commissioners have integrity to, to not allow that to happen. And that just goes along with public service, and I was offended by that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Camenzey?
I'd just like to comment that the city commission can use grants however we want. We can, we can do whatever we want as a commission. However, these recommendations come from our committees that spend countless hours looking at all of our parks and rec facilities and what needs attention the most. So I think we should be careful, as this was a major complaint that the city committees brought up to the committee on committees. The comment, at least so poorly written, is because I feel it does not financially protect the taxpayers. This has nothing to do with our city attorney's integrity or his job performance. This is what I feel this lease does not do for our taxpayers going forward. Lastly, I'd just like to say that I'm not sure how a five-year lease, which was the direction of this commission last month on the first reading, turned into a 25-year lease without the commission directing that publicly, unless I missed something. I am not sure that's a staff function to insert in there. So I guess, on that note, I'm disappointed that the 25 years wasn't the lease.
Thank you, Commissioner Camenzey. Commissioner Campana?
To be quick, I'd like to thank Matt and Sherry for enduring all this. It seems like they always get the last, last speak. And Kelly and the gentlemen, thank you for staying. I would like to address the comment made by, can I say his name?
Sure.
Mr. Potvin, who I respect in many ways, but when he made, I'd like him to realize, and this is the third time I'm going to say this, that when the issue of the boathouse first came up, I asked the commission, I asked our city attorney if there's a conflict of interest, and he said that since I have no financial gain to be made by this, there is no, there is no conflict, so I am free to do this. In fact, I'm required by the charter to, to vote on all matters, so I have to vote. I am not influenced by my wife. I do not belong to the roll club. I do not, I do not care to even go into Lake Superior past my ankles. So the comment he made was a little uncalled for. I agree with Dr. Coyne there. That would be all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campana. Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse?
Couple of quickies. Great job on Berga. Anybody that wasn't there and didn't attend that, that little conclave, that little festival, I think missed, missed a very rare opportunity. High commendations to DDA for putting that together and all other many partners. Getza Zino stepped forward, Bill's Brewery stepped forward, Carhartt stepped forward, and a whole host of others. Just remarkable, and I really look forward to the one next year. Thank you, Sarah Reynolds, for bringing in the cupcakes for the, the kids from the children's museum. That was a very nice touch, and I think everybody should realize that Sarah did that. Somewhat contentious meeting tonight, but that's okay. You know, the common denominator amongst all of us is that we really want to do the best we can for the city Marquette, for our citizens, and to keep it moving forward. And sometimes, we may disagree as to what that process is, or what that direction may be, or what that ultimate end will be, but the goal remains to do the very best we can for the city. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse. I just have a few items here. I concur with Commissioner Coyne in the, giving her good felicitations to Mrs. Hilton. I noted in the proclamation, it was noted she's a pillar of the church, she is also a pillar of the community, and I think it was a well-deserved proclamation. I think the issue of a five-year lease, we gave the attorney a, some direction. He came back. At one point, we had a discussion where there is a need for a longer term in the lease. The fact the March motion, I believe, did say that we wanted a license with a long term on it, because we knew, based on our, our experience with YMCA, that funding agencies do require some long-term arrangement. And I think he just anticipated that. I'm assuming that the, the commission isn't concerned about that, because at the last meeting, we all read the lease, we all approved the lease, and if anyone had a concern about it, it should have been objected to at that point. So I, I commend our staff for, for keeping us on the straight and narrow and efficiently producing our business. I would also like to weigh in on the, the insinuations that our public officials are anything less than gentlemen of the highest integrity. And my fellow commissioner, he is entirely correct. The charter requires him to vote, and I believe it's a unanimous vote of the city commission to, to excuse him, and I, for one, would not vote that way, so he has no choice but to consider those items, because our charter does require that each commissioner shall vote on each item unless excused because of financial interest or the, the unanimous vote of the commissioner, and I would not do that. I, the city manager asked to be recused, and I thought it was a wise decision on his part, specifically for the baseless accusations that were made. They're, they're going to continue. They'll, they'll continue with many other items in, in his, in his tenure. That, that's just a lot of the city manager, and I thought it was an appropriate judgment call on his point, part. He, he has recused himself. He has not been involved in the discussions. He has not been involved in any of the considerations. It's been handled exclusively by Mike Angeli. The emails are even intercepted and routed to the police chief. The letters and communications are routed to the police chief. They do not go to the city manager, even if they're addressed to the city manager. The staff intercepts them. So he has acted in nothing but the highest integrity on this item. The city attorney has, has no, whether his wife's in the, the club or not, he does not drive the policy of the commission. The commission makes the decisions and enacts policy when they vote up on this dies. In fact, we are not setting any policy on the lake shore by approving this, this lease. We may be setting a precedent, if some people think so, but I doubt so, because every action that we take is, is an action unto itself, and it's, and it's not setting policy or precedence. We don't work on a, a presidential basis in, in this city. We, we look at each action for its, its merits. Lastly, there's been comments about the plans of the DLP Service Center and the horrible things that are going to be levied upon our employees. Those are simply rumors. They, I guess, my, my understanding is the, the city has been undertaking discussions with other governmental bodies to see if we can combine facilities. Employees certainly are going to always be twittering about uncertainty, but it, it is irresponsible for commissioners to, to pay lipsters those rumors at these dies, and it's certainly irresponsible for any citizen in the community who doesn't really know what's going on to, to further the rumors also. And I, you know, I, the, as the plans are, are firmed up, the, the city manager, I'm sure, will communicate them to the employees, to the commission, and the, the public, and it's just, it's counterproductive to, to pay lip service to those rumors. Lastly, I would ask that the city manager, perhaps in, in briefly, because late hour, give us a brief update of the Duke Life Point considerations and the progress we're making. And also, although I only have one meeting left, I'll ask him to do it at the next meeting, and I hope the commission encourages him to continue that at each and every meeting until the hospital is open, because I think it's, it's an important thing to the public to hear what is happening, and, and he, he is the one who is at the nexus of all plans. He would have the most information. So, city manager?
Thank you, your honor. I, I think I covered most of the status updates in my earlier comments. I wouldn't really have anything to add to that. It's critical that we get the Brownfield Plan approved. That's going to serve as the financial basis for all of our plans moving forward. We have, I described three tracks. They're moving in parallel. So the, the legal and the financial efforts of the CFO and the city attorney are moving forward regards to trying to firm up the property sales and the tax stipulations, and we're working actively with all parties to take a look at what the overall timeline might look like for an actual construction project, make sure we incorporate in all the critical milestones in that. And so we'll be, we'll be reporting that regularly at every meeting, and I concur with everything you said. I'd only have one other thing I'd like to offer this evening, your honor. I specifically want to thank the commission for all the, the support. I know sometimes these meetings are tedious, but more importantly, I'd like to thank, I know what are probably about a thousand new viewers to our meeting this evening. I had the opportunity to expend my thanks to the executive board of the Michigan Municipal League, all of our program managers with MISTDA, with the MEDC, with the MDEQ, many of the different parties that are going to be acting as speakers over the course of the next week, who are going to have an opportunity to interact with many of you. And then, of course, the hundreds of local officials from different parts of the state who were elected to serve their cities, just like the commission's been elected to serve Marquette. And I, I know they probably viewed this meeting with great interest. I'm hopeful that, you know, you'll extend the same courtesy to them as they take advantage of Marquette's hospitality this week, as I've asked the rest of the community to do. It's going to be a great week to be in Marquette. We have a lot of exciting things to go on. Certainly, nothing that, wouldn't have the opportunity to spur more dialogue, get a chance to kick the tires and see all the good things that are going on. And I'd encourage everybody to get out and make sure that when that team leaves Marquette, that they have a great sense of who we are, what we can do, and where we're hoping to be. So, thank you, your honor.
Good to see you, manager. I guess I, as chair, I can add one more last comment, and that is to express our appreciation to Matt McCollin and, and Sherry Davy and the Brownfield Authority. They really have fast-tracked this, this process, and it, typically, these, these projects don't move as quickly, but we certainly appreciate the fine work, because we couldn't have done it without you. It would not have happened. And I guess we show Duke Life Point that we can move quickly, and I hope that they can move as, equally as quickly. So, that adjourned.